Folks, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone to the January twenty eighth meeting of Town and County Planning Board. Let me first introduce folks here at the dais. We have sort of Kim Burkert, our remote facilities coordinator. Korean Hatch is our recording secretary. Active on the board tonight is Tim Schneider, our alternate member, but again, active because of of our need for him to step up. Thanks for stepping up. Amanda Van Laken, who is our planning board member, Bob La Course, planning board member, I'm Chuck Euler, planning board chairman. You got Kristen Smith, our zoning officer. Eric Cooper, representing MRB, and Chris Nadler, our planning board attorney. So we're gonna follow the agenda tonight as published. So really, the first item on the agenda is privilege of the floor. Is anyone here or out there? Want to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda? Now would be the time to do so. One, two, twice. All right, we'll move on then. There were two hearings that needed to be published in the local newspaper, and it was published in the Daily Messenger on one twenty four, January twenty fourth, for both the Cheney and the Uptown Landing applications that we'll be discussing tonight. So they've been duly published. All right, let's get right into the agenda. The first item is CPN twenty twenty four, one twenty nine. The man of Rue representing property owners are Gerber Homes, who have a request a final site plan for a single lot at five two two eight Foster Road, affectionately known as Lot Two E of the Foster Road subdivision. So Greg, why don't you tell us a little bit about this particular lot?
Good evening, Greg McMahon, McMahon La Rue. Lot Two E was not part of the most recent Foster Road subdivision. It was one of two frontage lots that had previously been subdivided. This lot has frontage only on Foster Road, so it's basically a conventional residential lot. The plan that we have before you shows the proposed footprint. There were architectural plans submitted as part of the application. We did receive a comment letter from MRB back in, I think it's around the seventh or eighth of January, which we, we did revise the plans in accordance with that letter, and those were uploaded, the most recent plans uploaded to cloud permit, and I believe that's what's up on the screen right now. That, other than that, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It will connect the sanitary sewer out in Foster Road, public water, where there is a part of the preliminary overall plans. There's a drainage well that runs down the east property line, the easement for that swell has been filed, and the filing information is shown on the plan. And I think for that, answer any questions since you, yeah.
Board members, any questions?
I got a couple for you.
Sure.
Of course, but I had a couple. I was out there yesterday. Your driveway that you have posted in here, it's not on the exact same location that's shown, it currently has an access, right? There's an access point on that lot already.
There, there, yes, more than likely, but yeah, that, that would I, I don't know exactly where it is, but this was proposed to align with the location of the garage in the house.
So, yeah, I asked I just, I remember, what's his name? Anthony's dad, where's he? Who, Bronco? But that, that hasn't access, my question is, are you gonna take it out? Because it's not shown here on the plan. Two, it has a culvert. And you don't show in a culvert here on here, I was wondering if there's gonna need, is a need for a culvert?
There is, there's no need for a culvert out at the right way, or, or out in the right way, there is a culvert, as you can see, about midway back the drive, midway back on the driveway.
Right.
That's, that's going to be conveying the drainage, so.
Okay, so not at the road, but further toward.
Further towards the house.
There's behind this house, we talked a lot about this, I remember when we did the subdivision of all of them. A lot of those comments from the neighbor to the left here about water holding there, and I noticed there was a swale going all the way down that, that line.
Yes.
My question was, right now, I know that it's all rough cut up right now, but now there's a pond behind this lot. What are you gonna, is, how is that gonna? How are you gonna move that water away from there for the next lot?
That's being worked on right now, there was a meeting representatives, representatives of our office and the town met out there last week regarding erosion control items and measures. There was an updated erosion control plan for the entire project, which was an amendment to the current SWIP, was submitted to the town, I believe, yesterday or Friday, I'm not sure which, so, and, and that work to remedy some of the issues out there is currently underway. We've looked, we've looked at the drainage issues, and there are plans in the works to take care of all of those issues which have become apparent again with, with the work out there, once they started clearing and rubbing.
Yep, it was good that it's not gonna go the direction of west there. Toward his house, looks like it's all gonna go toward the other lots in the back.
It's gonna run around the rear of lots one and two, I believe, in the, in the rear, on the, on the cul-de-sac, or on the turnaround back there, and it'll, it'll run in a a swell around the back.
Behind three.
And it's being, the grading will be updated. They're trying to do a lot of that now, but the conditions are, are really rough right now for trying to get good drainage.
The next question I have is really, I don't know, both towards you, but maybe Eric, he was noted in your MRB comments of thirteen foot driveways. Our, our standard had been twelve, I looked it up in underneath all of our planning, and the only thing I could find is thirteen foot detail. It used to be in our plans, but it's not in there anymore. So just, I, I guess the question to the town, are we gonna stick with a thirteen foot?
In talking to the code enforcement officer, he said that it's thirteen feet within the right of way, and my son all cracked in my mouth, but probably with the private side. So, so my, my, my third comment was a misreading of detail, and Mike Murphy corrected me on that.
So it's gonna be twelve or?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay. So you show thirteen.
We, we revised it based on the comment letter.
Right, that's what I thought.
We can change it back.
Well, it's up to you, whatever you say, that's what, we need to have a clear though for us, so.
Yeah.
It's twelve, that's because there's another one coming up that's thirteen holes. Okay, perfect, that's a good question. Nope, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
Greg, maybe with that foot that you're saving in blacktop, by the length of the driveway, you can possibly put a turnaround?
There's one there.
We have, we have one in the driveway, we, there's one show.
Okay.
Just on the, as you look at, as you look down the driveway to the right.
Yeah.
There's a.
Oh, the offset there.
There's an offset.
Okay, because you don't want it back on the foster.
No, no, that, that allows enough room for a car to back out of the garage, back in and go out for.
How does the front of this house align with the neighbor to the, to the west, as far as setback to the street, not the same? I was trying to make it all encore.
I don't, I honestly, I don't know, I can't answer that question.
Most of these houses on Foster, pretty much are the same distance back from the roads, and you don't want this thing sort of sticking out like a sore thumb, pushing the road, so. Can we check that?
I can check that, you know, there's some.
I looked at that too, and this lot is not like any other lot. These two lots are thirty thousand square.
Yep.
Where the other ones go back like three acres or so.
Go all the way back to the gorge, yeah.
They're much longer.
Yeah, the, the front setback is sixty feet, and this house is set at eighty four. So we are a little bit behind the front setback, but I'll, I'll take a look at it.
So I know in the discussion of the overall plan, there was concerns about some dedicated easements, a lot dedicated, but defined easements, I don't think this lot had one of those easements.
It does.
It's got a drainage easement, not the private one, that's kind of.
No, no, the drainage, I think we were talking about.
Yeah.
To convey water, stormwater across other lots.
This, yes, this, it's, it runs down the east property line, and it's, it's half of the easement is on this lot, and half of the easement is on the adjoining lot, and that easement was reviewed by the town, has been filed with the clerk.
And it was on the recorded subdivision.
Yes.
That was a ten foot easement? I think that's what we were talking about.
Ten foot way, private drainage easement.
Okay, I know there was some concern from Kevin Alveny, that he felt those, that easement might be a little narrow, there should be a wider easement.
Is it that one, or is it the one that's smaller?
He just said, common easements that run across this property, he didn't define, I just, I know there's another one down at Lot Five, which is probably takes more water from the cost of the road. Well, let's just check that, make sure Kevin's comfortable with the ten foot, or I think Jim and Kevin were talking, so if Jim Fletcher is comfortable, that's something we, we, the planning board can live with. I think Greg, in your title block down there, you have Lot Two, that should be Two E, and I think you have it addressed different than the Lot Five two two eight.
It's, well, it there's, it's Lot Two, based on the twenty twenty one Foster Road subdivision, and we give the filed map, so it's true, when it was subdivided, it was labeled Lot Two, but for our purposes on the preliminary overall, we just called it Two E for two existing, just because we have a lot two, and we didn't wanna it's confusing.
Yeah, you have two Lot Twos in the subdivision, so please, would you change the title block to Two E?
Sure.
There's no confusion?
Yep.
Drive, we with, did, turnabout, talked about. Okay. So we do not have a secret in this, because we went through it with the the overall. As far as third party reviews, referrals, we have no comments back from Chester Fire Department. The ag committee concluded there was no loss of ag land, but there was concern about the the woods in the back, that no more of the woods be, be touched than, than has to be for the construction of the homes, but that doesn't apply to this lot. Jim Fletcher, he saw his notes regarding the sewer backfill and the water line.
Yep.
The county sewer department had concern about the detail sheets, making sure you have the right detailed sheets in the package.
All those have been addressed, and it's in the final approval phases with the county right now.
Eric, anything MRB had concerns about that want to bring to our attention, just cover them in the conditions?
Our letter, or our, our comments are the conditions as per usual, and Greg, it was just, most of the time I'll have on.
You will need a highway permit from Jim Fletcher to do the trenching work. And that pretty well covers. Anybody in the audience? Want to address the board regarding this application? If not, anything else in the board? All right, let's move on. So we have a final site plan resolution for this. Everybody checked the conditions, that cover pretty much what we talked about. Does have the park and rec fee. So if, if everyone's comfortable, why don't we take a motion? I'll make a motion to approve CPN two zero two four dash one twenty nine Foster Road. With thirteen, or we have any addition?
I had the additional condition about the title block being revised to actively plug the numbers.
Because he said he came in.
And conditions.
And can I suggest one revision to, number one, just to specifically state the date of expiration, and you say a hundred days, so a period of a hundred and eighty days to July twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, just so we can have that more clearly stated in our resolutions.
Yep, let's count them now, but later.
For this one or for all?
I want to make that a standard revision to all of our site plan pools moving forward.
Okay, got a motion from Tim, I have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, for the discussion, see if not all in favor. I oppose, question carries. Greg, thanks for coming. All right. Item number two, CPN twenty twenty four, one thirty five, James Cheney. He owns a property at forty seventy five, on Linda Drive. Requesting a special use permit for approval to operate a short term rental with a maximum capacity greater than twelve. And, good evening.
Good evening, I'm Liz Schneider, I am with Finger Lakes Premier Properties, I'll be representing James Cheney tonight.
Okay, thanks, Liz. Do you want to tell us a little bit about what Mr. Cheney wants to do? I know we have a lot of information that was submitted by you and.
A lot of information. I really appreciate everybody's help, thank you so much. The property is a four bedroom, three and a half bath home, and we're only requesting an occupancy of twelve. The home can't sleep more than twelve, but we're looking to limit it to twelve. That road, we understand is a very residential area, and we'd like to be mindful of that and practice responsible renting. So instead of sleeping nineteen, we'd like to only sleep twelve.
Twelve is the cuddle.
It is the cuddle.
Yeah.
If the house has capacity, have an occupancy greater than twelve, the way the code's written.
Oh.
That's a shame.
Even if it's requested within parameters.
Well, that makes sense.
Oh, that's easy.
Well, it's simpler.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we weren't sure what you were going over twelve, but if you're gonna stay with twelve.
But at twelve, we'd like the permit to say no more than twelve, because we will be advertising twelve, and we'd like to make sure that the permit does reach twelve, so that they don't get there, a guest doesn't get there and see nineteen on the permit, so we'd like everything to be co-ysed.
And all your rules and regs and policies all have twelve ones.
Absolutely.
Okay. At least part of this race is.
There's six, technically.
Six.
I personally say there's more, but.
Yeah, there's a little bit of space.
Honestly, that's why I was going by eighteen, I was like, can you put nine there? Because you have that barn above there.
We won't be advertising the barn, that'll be a lot of space.
If I may, I had one one question really, is that on these short term rentals, and I know your company does really good at this, but keeping people, your guests, off the residence property to the north. There's a fence to the south, nothing to the north. Do you have anything in the property that says, now here's the property line, don't go past this?
There is, part of the good neighbor policy is posted right in the house, letting guests know to remain only on the property that they've rented.
I read, I read that, but there's, there's an ability to wander.
Um, we'd be happy to post the survey, a photo of the survey in the house, that way they can see, guests can see the maps of where they can and cannot go.
That'd be good.
Okay.
Yeah. And they have, of course, access to this lake on the other side of the road. You, you said it right up front, too, on Linda is a, a busy private road.
I think that there's only one other rental on that road, it's very residential, very quiet.
Very quiet, very private. I was surprised not to see any notes from the group either.
Yes.
Really surprised. I, I recognize you.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that was your property to the north, yeah. That's what I had. Kristen, doesn't their policy say no parties or events?
Uh, yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
And your, your, your bylaws or whatever say just no events? So if you could add parties or slash events?
Okay.
Because that's what, those are what our town.
Okay.
You can, and I want to understand your company manages that really well.
We definitely try to.
Yes. Are you the owner of the house, or are you?
No, I'll be James Cheney's property manager.
Oh. That was my question. Okay, anybody else on the board? Just for the record, Finger Lakes Property submitted their use policy, their hot tub policy, their lease agreement, which I think holds in compliance with our regulations, and certainly if those rules and regulations are enforced, I think we'll be happy. I have a question.
Sure.
So what happens if the property owner no longer engages with Finger Lakes property?
We'll make, I'm assuming you'll pass a resolution granting a special use permit if you do decide to grant it. It makes these things a condition of their permit, whether or not Finger Lakes is their property manager. They'll still have to have these same rules.
Yeah, the special use permits with the owner.
Right.
Brother Lakes property, so.
So that's part of the special use permit, they're required to identify a property manager and a twenty four hour a day contact, we said, X number of miles, I think. And they've identified who the Finger Lakes. And you know that, you know, obviously aware of Finger Lakes reputation in the years, doing these types of short term rentals. The reputation is not necessarily required for the permit. Could have another company where you have something else that's, that doesn't have this reputation, so allowed to have that. Which is why we will close conditions on these rules.
Do we explicitly, like, state that anywhere, like, this, this is being issued to the property owner, and no matter who manages, and maybe that, maybe it's in a condition or binding or in the permit itself, but like, making it like, in perpetuity with the.
Condition one, subject to the current owner, operator, and then I was just making some slight changes to condition six. To say changes such the number of rooms we rented, rules, policies, or others. As far as I work with people.
See a memo?
Yeah, yeah.
See, it's covered, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, and talking about these, and especially use permit at number eleven says sixteen.
Yes, yep, this can be changed. Yeah, I did. Got?
Mr. Chairman, we did get a wave on neighborhood that was in opposition.
Russ, I can't see it too well, can you read it?
Oh, you want me to? Dear Planning Board, I am writing to report my opposition against this application, four zero seven five, on Linda Drive. Has quite the reputation for its lack of privacy. Over the years, this problem has only been exacerbated by continual development, and especially the relatively recent phenomenon of short term rentals. The new town codes on STRs that rein in the excesses, excessive STRs are for the benefit of nearby residents, STRs create only burden for nearby residents who receive zero financial reimbursement from short term rentals. Sincerely, Stephen Smulders, who resides at four zero nine three, on Linda Drive.
Well, hopefully, our regulations will take care of what the smallest concerns are, that's why we wrote the regulations, and I think that's why we're going through this process tonight to make sure everything is in accordance with those requirements. So I I feel comfortable with, with what I've seen. I suggest, do you have a current permit right now for the property?
It was, the first permit was approved, but now, no, I'm just waiting for tonight's approval.
And I know, I should, for the record, I should say, our code department did go out and do an inspection of property.
Yes.
The property is in compliance with our regulations as as outlined, and so it is in compliance, and has been in compliance, and I don't see any reason why we would not issue a special use permit to condone or confirm the twelve documents. I think it is on sewer and water, which is good, because it's sometimes a concern, especially with the sewer capacity. You do register your guests as part of your lease agreement.
Yes.
So you know who's staying. Again, your rules and regulations are quite extensive, and can that be included as part of the statement of operations? Because that way, if there is a, another administration of the property, that everything is stated here tonight, and is testified to be included, that that would go with the property. I think that would work, how's that sound, board?
Yeah, I would just, I think their name is on it too, so if they change, do it happily, definitely, and you, for example, that would have to be sent, anyone? First statement of our.
And the last question I have is, how, how long a period of time do we make the special use? And most, especially with permits that is on the, but in this case, I think we have been issuing one year if we have some concerns or I think the permit is three year, I mean, the fee is for three years, no, one year? All right, how long do we want to make the term of the special use?
I think in for my personal thought is that we keep it the way we've been doing it, it is a year, and that gives the residents time to look at it, and if there's problems for you guys to address, and then pretend they come back and say, yes or no, it's good or bad. I know, so, it's like a trial.
Okay.
Okay, so it'll be for a year. Anything else we have to include before we move on? Oh, yeah.
Were you, were there rules outside of the rules contained in the statement of operation?
Uh, yes. We're gonna, okay. I think you just incorporate the lease agreement and the policy as presented by Finger Lakes property.
Yep.
Into the statement of operations. Okay, I'll go outside to anyone here or in the audience or out in digital land, anyone want to speak regarding this application? You do have one?
Yeah, one, one in our house.
Oh, okay. Okay, why don't we take you, Melis? Have a seat for a sec, yeah. Thanks.
Hi, Cathy Foster, forty sixty five, on Linda, they're the next door neighbor notes. My two concerns are that, hopefully, in your rental agreement or whatever, it's not just the people that rented and stay there, but then they do have. rental agreement or whatever, it's not just the people that rented and stay there, but then they do have people to come visit and, you know, all that kind of stuff. And parking is a real problem. I mean, it just is. And so it really needs to stay on their property because we have such limited spaces. Just our own property. And then secondly, I would ask that the noise ordinance is somehow worded in there because before these people decided to rent, the next door neighbors were great neighbors, but they had a college age son who would have gatherings. And, you know, it was very, very loud on work nights and such, and it just it can be a problem and it wasn't a rental. So it can only be, could be worse with a rental. Those are my two concerns. Okay?
Ma'am, so it's been your experience that parking has been inadequate?
Grossly inadequate, yeah.
And that's when it was a private residence?
Uh huh, uh huh. We, there's not, it's a dead end road. I'm the dead end. And so when, yeah, when people want to park, you know, they park all over, including all over our lawn and it's been, you know, in the spring when it's wet, it's just trash. And, you know, I'm not trying to be a cranky neighbor, but it's a pain in butt.
Is that a result of this property or the properties? The group of properties, the industry?
No, this property.
This property, okay.
Just.
But managed as a private residence.
Yeah, it's just because there's really nowhere to go. You can't park in the turnaround because it's the only place that, you know, Amazon or the fire trucks or anything like that can do a turnaround or anybody that has a boat that wants to bring it with them, they they go down our driveway trying to figure it out and most of the time they're not very experienced and they try to take out a few lamp posts and things like that. It's really, it's tight.
How about board if we limit it to six parking and no more than six vehicles or six parking space? Well, six vehicles. I think we've done that in other cases.
I I have a couple of questions. Was there a limitation on guests in your leasing?
The occupancy is anytime, so if we speak of the occupancy is twelve, it's twelve period. That would include visitors. There should be no more than twelve people on property at any time.
Now, and that's different from what our code technically.
That's where Finger Lakes does it.
So, but, so this will be more restrictive than our code.
Yeah, and I would say make that a separate condition. Um, if the, you know, the applicants.
No more than six vehicles.
Six vehicles and twelve total occupants of the property, including all guests at any given time. It'd be another condition that just makes enforcement a little easier rather than going to search for a lease and, you know, when Mike Murphy's going through.
It's much easier.
Well being or convenience, but.
Okay.
And your your question about noise, there is, I read in their law bylaws, they very clearly sick talk about their noise levels and fines that would be given out to their guests. So.
Thanks, that's all.
And if you have complaints, you know where the new complaint area is in the cloud? There's a new complaint button in code compliance for that.
Just now.
No, no, so it's not in this situation. This requires vigilance.
Yeah.
By the neighbors. If you're having problems, I don't know what the sheriff's department is gonna say. But I know that the town will follow up. So you want to report, you can report it to both of them, not suggesting in any way, don't call the police, but make sure you also call the town because if you call the sheriffs, the town's not gonna know about it. And if the town knows about it, then they can follow up and we can.
It's not necessarily, just, you know.
I know, but is it in general for short term rentals? Uh, the town can assess, impose fines, can pull the license. If you just call nine one one, the town won't even know about it.
And if we come back in a year for it.
Yeah.
But nothing on the record, then.
Okay, did someone want to speak online?
I'm unsure.
Okay. All right, well, we're gonna move on. I'm, I think we're ready to close the hearing and move on with the resolutions. We're all in agreement? Okay, we we have a special use permit. And well, first we have a seeker resolution, which is type two applies this property. So why don't we take care of that first? Someone want to give me a motion regarding the seeker resolution?
I'll make that motion for seeker type two action on twenty-four dash one three five forty seventy-five on the one to drive.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. All right, let's move on the special use permit. Make sure we have it worded correctly. Uh, Eric, do you want to tell us?
What are the?
What, yeah, what conditions we uh we changed and then we made, we dropped it to twelve. We added six, no more than six cars.
Yeah, so six was revised, as I mentioned previously. Uh, number eleven was revised to say no more than twelve. Twelfth condition was added that the leasing and policy presented by Finger Lakes for the property shall be incorporated in the statement of operations. And then thirteen, a maximum partner in the site should have no more than six vehicles. And when the resolution itself addresses all the criteria of uh two twenty thirty-five B for special use permits. Um, if you all. And then.
Oh, and one year.
Yes, one year, that's noted in number one.
Okay.
We're gonna do one year and date.
I don't see who's listening.
Hey.
You got a man that.
I'm awake, guys. Watch out.
Okay, Liz, your those conditions are acceptable? Okay. Um, all right, so we have a resolution. Did I get a motion?
I did.
Uh, I don't think so. I did the seeker, but I'll do the special use too. So I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit at um forty seventy-five on the one to drive. Twenty-four dash one three five with the updated conditions and additional conditions as we just discussed.
Very good. Second?
I'll second.
We'll do it again, Bob?
Yeah, I know.
Further discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thanks for coming out, Liz. Okay, uh, thanks, Mrs. Foster. Hey, the uh next application is CPN twenty twenty-four one thirty-nine. Marks Engineering for a property in Middle Cheshire Road. We've been requested by the applicant to uh continue this application. So you have in your package a continuation resolution? I guess all we need to determine is to when. I think it was sort of less of the property owner that they would give back to us. So you want to push it out a month and then see what happens in a month if the applicant's ready to come before us?
One month.
One month. Okay, so that would be the February. Whatever that meeting is. Eleven?
February twenty-fifth.
Okay, February twenty-fifth. All right, do I have motion to uh continue discussion uh of that property of the twenty fifth?
Be so moved. Someone again, second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have CPN twenty twenty-four one forty-one. Anthony, that's the representative property at forty-nine twenty-five, County Route sixteen. It's a site plan approval for a tear down and rebuild of a single family home in the RLD. Good evening, Anthony.
Good evening. So we're running you today for a tear down rebuilds in the RLD district. This project kind of started as a renovation. Um, there's gonna be a pretty big renovation challenge of when we got further into the program of the new house design, it came to our attention that the first floor was about a foot and a half too low to be able to be by the FEMA, two foot above the FEMA. So it led us to this plan in front of you tonight is a complete tear down rebuild of the existing structure. It's gonna stay in the same exact footprint. Um, there's a couple of things that we're gonna reduce some some of the the attached decks and some of the driveways to kind of reduce some lot coverage and help out um some of the drainage issues. There are a few walls that border West Lake Road um that were gonna be removed, kind of reconfigured to help get some of the vehicles a little bit out of them right away, a little bit more. You'll see that wall to the east of the road. We're gonna remove a wall and then raise up an existing boulder wall to try to hold that back and just get some of the, you know, traffic off of there. But for the most part, it's, we're just tearing it down and putting it right back in the existing, existing form, so.
Andy, can you talk about the new drainage plan? Because right now I see your drains going right to the lake.
Yeah, we didn't, at this point, we didn't put any stormwater management in there because of our footprint's so small disturbance. So we can add it if the board would like it, some, like some sort of storage.
We can better.
Yeah, we can add it.
Infiltration before you saw.
We'll add something to the plan there where it's gonna exit the uh the roof drains, so we can definitely do that.
I went down there, it was beautiful, I was like, nice looking houses.
Yeah, the interior is the issue right now because it's the low ceilings and we couldn't do anything by raising up the first floor to kind of keep it. It was just there like seven foot below and by raising a foot and a half, you have no headroom, so.
Same size, same height that it already.
It'd be a little bit higher, but it's still under the twenty-five year average. Should be more of a usable space now with the current, kind of just kind of like a split level on the first floor or just it'll flow a lot better and be a lot more usable.
Appreciate also the uh landscaping plan that you showed.
Okay.
Uh, that was uh excellent. Uh, I went down there, there's not a lot of trees now and you're adding more uh with more shrubbery. That's good, good to see.
Yeah, we're trying to do, you know, abide by the shoreline guidelines and really break up that frontage, so.
Good. It's uh all, hopefully all native.
It's all native. It is. Nothing invasive. Everything's native, so.
Feels too easy right now.
Might be setting a trend, not one variance requested.
On the lake.
On the lake.
Yeah, I think that's a question came up, but the landscape plan shows an infiltration area.
Yeah, we, we show, yeah, we had a plan. We kind of had a plan. We just haven't decided if it was gonna be a rain garden or just something underground stuff. The storage units, so we're kind of playing around, you know.
I think the ECB also requested some sort of uh
Dry well.
Control.
Yeah, one of your dry wells that you do with your French drain, those are good, work well there.
Those would seem to work better than a rain garden because then
You don't have to.
No one messes with them.
Yeah.
So some people would just, after a while. Fill them in, so they definitely work better. Catch bases is a little bit more easy to touch, that kind of thing. Okay, we can add something in that south instance in the corner.
You know if the roof is going to be asphalt or steel?
Asphalt.
Asphalt? Okay, all the more reason to have some sort of.
Yeah, I'll catch those, yeah.
Picking stuff off the roof and we don't want to put that right in the lake, so.
Yeah, we can do that.
Um, we did, there's one section of that roof with our design, maybe metal. Um, my wife is timing against it, doesn't sound green, but we haven't decided yet. But the majority is a disaster. If not all.
What color facade?
Well, our neighbors just had it outside and that was gonna be our color, so we uh, we're remaking that right now.
It's gonna be more of a dark.
It's gonna be a dark color for sure.
It's not white, not white.
Do we actually like the color it is right now? So we would love to keep it that color, um, but it's really similar to what the neighbors, you know. A nice color.
Yeah.
As, as a reminder, um board doesn't have per view of the color.
No.
We sort of blended in with the shoreline guidelines.
Understood.
And as Bob said, everybody commented how, how well the landscape plan was for bodies.
I'll let Dan know.
Doesn't look like it, we didn't see it.
No, I've stayed naked. He's really good with the hand draw stuff. I don't know.
Okay. So Anthony, you're, you're square with the code on the first floor elevation?
Yeah, we are, we're right at that two feet above it, so we're right where we need to be now. Or we will be. We're gonna try some of the foundation once we get in there, if we can, use that, like the west wall and you know, we don't really know until we start getting into the, the demo, if we can kind of modify or reuse some of that foundation, fill it in or that's still to be determined by the article.
And also to your credit, the building coverage is going down two point two percent. Lot coverage is going down ten percent.
Yeah, there's some decks that are being removed and not putting back some of the walkways. They're just not being used at all. And then there's a, like a gravel pull off on the south that we just don't need, so we're gonna, you know, removing that. We're gonna use it for a staging area for now and then once that's done, we're just gonna pull it back because it's really never used.
And your off street parking is, I see in that area in front of the wall.
Yeah, it'll be in front of the wall, but then there's also another driveway that goes between the two walls. So there's parking, there'll be parking here. And then also the driveway comes to the air and there's parking. There's plenty of off street parking.
You're gonna fix that big ditch that's in there now?
That dip, yeah, we're gonna try it. We have to, we have to work with the.
Up with the bottom part.
Yeah, we'll have to work with the uh county because we have to get it, it's so, it's in the right of way, so we'll have to talk to them about that. We'll have to get them out there.
I know it appears to the uh status of that force main that runs through the property is questioned.
We're working with Tyler regarding the septic now, so we're kind of going back and forth. We had a we had a plant, one was a renovation. It was the same. We weren't changing anything really other than now we're tearing it down. It was still that renovation where we were gonna use like a microbial inoculator to help with some of the, the increased space. I'm thinking it was okay with that, so we're trying to figure out exactly what that's gonna look like. But now there's the force main, the septic is three properties to the south. It's in the um.
Two of those.
Yeah, it's flowing north.
Yeah, this, you know, our, our residents and then also the residents in the north, they share one, so it's a little bit confusing system. It's a larger system. It's three houses down that kind of parallels, kind of sixteen.
And there's no easement?
There is an easement. I can, I can get that to you. There is an easement. It's there. It's just not shown on this because of the size of the scale. But I will provide that easement. There is mapping, so we can have that.
So you use a force main to get to a shared septic?
Yeah. It was done a while. But they recently redid all the force mains within the last, I think it was the last seven or eight years. They upgraded them when it was even working, so. Okay, yeah, so, so, yeah, you, you've got Tyler on here as a condition.
Yeah.
And uh, I think the easement should be shown.
Yeah, I, I have a map, but so.
Are you pretty sure that's where it runs?
Exactly. I, I was, I was out there when they redid it, relocated it, so that's, that's on location, actually, when they were built, so.
That's a lot of that gives sometimes chasing you tail. Okay, good. Uh, anything else, board? My notes, uh, the county just said if you work within the uh right away of the, of the road, you'd need permits from them. I don't think you're going to be.
Um, that little, the, we are gonna be doing some work just because of the driveway. There's a big dip in it, so it's really right on the shoulder, so we kind of want to blend that back in.
And ECB, uh, again complimented you on the landscaping. They also uh, had a concern about the roof drains with the outfall, which we talked about regarding uh some sort of stormwater management system. Uh, that takes care of that. County Planning Board, uh, declared this is exempt, suppose their review. I think that pretty well covers mine. Any uh want to have anything to say in the public, either here or there regarding this application before we move on? Yes? Okay, I think we're ready to move on. So it's a type two seeker and we have a single stage site plan. And the, any other thing is, uh, in tearing down the property, if there's anything that's recoverable, you can offer to restore habitat. That's usually, and it's not a historic home, I assume?
How old is it?
I don't know what year, so I have no idea. Okay, I sometimes leaf likes to take pictures of it's old, but in this case. All right, so we're ready to uh let's take the seeker and the site plans together with one motion or two motions, but same person.
So as a bundle?
It is a. It is a. I'll I'll make that bundle plan on uh C P N twenty four one forty one at uh forty nine twenty five, County Road sixteen. For a seeker type two type, type two resolution and a site plan approval at said address with. The, is there any more additional?
Two additional conditions. Will I ever page enforcement easily, shall be shown in the plans and private insurance stormwater infiltration shall be provided, but. I'm not sure what additional detail or standards you want to add to that.
So some stormwater, like what Aunt and I were talking about.
Dry well or at the end of that pipe, like at the end of the drain?
Just add stormwater management, it's a good plan to really. There's only one place we can go and it's gonna be in the vicinity of that pipe, we have an extended problem to get around the force mains, but.
On the north side? Yeah. On the south side?
South.
There's one on the north side too coming out of the off the shed, yeah, okay. Oh yeah.
Those two initial conditions?
Yep.
You gotta put a date on number one, right? Chris advised me that administrative changes like that, I don't necessarily need to.
But you had it back, Chris.
Let me tell.
Trying to streamline the process.
Uh I'll second that. Okay, I got a motion in a second, our uh. Planning board historian here, Kristen said that that property, the house is nineteen thirty?
Nineteen thirty, she pulled it up, yes, wow.
Uh check for your historian, just give him a call or something, you know, he might want to come out. Okay, all right.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second. Discussion, if not all in favor?
Aye.
I. Close, there she carries, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay. We've moved up to uh C P S twenty twenty four one forty three, Marathon Engineering. Representing Jeff Cook for Project Uptown Landing. Uh we are in the preliminary overall subdivision stage of this project. Advocate is proposing four and fourteen lot subdivision with mixed use development in accordance with. Preliminary approved incentive zoning agreement with the town and uh. Matt, good evening.
Good evening.
Before you get on a roll.
Yeah, somebody tell us.
You're here tonight essentially for a sketch plan, review the applicant has submitted a a full set of plans. Uh matters for overall uh phased subdivision. I mean, you have submitted uh phase one as well, or will be, and will be submitting phase one in the near future. Um the reason, you know, there there's, it's really a sketch plan review for tonight only. Uh there's some administrative uh changes that the town board needs to make to the incentive zoning approval. You have seen this as an incentive zoning application and provided comments to the town board. Who took those comments incorporated some of those comments into their uh incentive zoning approval. Um just some technical details that I believe the town board will. Uh grant the amendment, the requested amendment for the incentive zoning, I think it complies with the intent of the incentive zone that the town board granted. Um it's not necessarily something you need to concern yourselves with now. Think the applicant wants to get some feedback, see where the planning board is on their overall application. Yeah, somewhere is sort of where we're at.
Yeah, gonna cross my whole presentation off.
Thank you, Matt, good evening.
And now, here's that.
Uh so there's nothing that the town board is looking for from the planning board for their meeting on Monday night?
No, these are separate applications now for separate processes now. They've provided the town board, looks forward at this next meeting and the meeting after that, then you'll be able to grant a preliminary approval in order to keep things. Moving forward simultaneously, we're doing simultaneous checks.
So even though the incentive zoning was adopted and applied to the property, the underlying district is form based, well, part of it.
Most of it, is what I understand, yeah.
So we are proceeding with the. Uh procedures uh involved with form based code, which is a sketch plan.
That's correct, that's why we're here this evening.
So, board members, I guess that's what we're looking at, we're handling this as a sketch. And the applicant is open to any suggestions, comments we may have. It is, is prerogative to uh accept those comments and uh you know, adapt them into the design or. Not, so. Why don't you go ahead and go over a little bit about, for everybody, I mean, I think there are other people online, I think this meeting was. Pretty well advertised, so there may be people that are not familiar with your projects, so Matt, if you would do that.
Sure, absolutely, uh first I'd like to introduce the folks here with me on the development side. Uh I'm Matt Tomlinson with Marathon Engineering, with the Site Civil Engineers for the project and have been involved through. Incentive zoning process as well, uh Jake Calabrese is with me for Marathon. I believe Steve Cullum's joining us, who's the project architect uh via Zoom, and then we've got Jeff Cook and Ian De Naro. On the ownership and development side uh here, and I don't think Dave's with us tonight, okay, great. Um so I know this board has been here and I want to just update the board on the steps that we've been doing, because we've been. Uh doing an awful lot of work to get ready for this and and kind of proceeding with the project once we're successful at incentive zoning. So um. The steps that we've taken since we appeared last before this board is obviously we went back to the town board, obtained our incentive zoning approval. Uh we then made application for preliminary overall to this board back in November just prior to Thanksgiving. And the project was referred out to uh everybody on the list, I think that was possible because of the size of the project and the complexity. Uh we've appeared before the agricultural um. Resources Board, I think it is, Environmental Conservation, we were referred to county, we've received some comments from town staff and been working closely with John, Sarah, Chris. Uh Eric, et cetera, as we've moved this project forward on the detail and uh trying to make sure that we provide as complete a package as possible. To this board, so uh the overall project, I'll just do a real brief overview for anyone that hasn't seen it yet. And then dive a little bit more into some of the details that we've provided for consideration. So we're located on approximately a hundred acres, we're at uh Fire Hall Road. And Parkside Drive adjacent to uh Blue Heron Park. We're also adjacent uh primarily to large, single family agricultural on our north and eastern sides, and on the western side is where we. Order up to other portions of the form based code, mixed use and Route three thirty two sub areas. As well as some multifamily primarily to the south of our property or along the southern border. Uh as part of our incentive zoning approval process, the town board did a type one seeker coordinated review, which this board. Uh obviously was included in some of that review and did obtain a neg deck as part of our incentive zoning. Uh it's my understanding that as we move forward on plan review with this board and with town staff. That you guys will be looking at it for consistency purpose, but we're not doing a separate secret review, I'm sure Chris can correct me if I got that wrong. Um so to a certain extent, a lot of the big pieces on this project have been done. But what we're really uh looking forward to working with this board on is obviously moving forward through the site plan subdivision approval process. And I think what we're proposing because of the intent and the time that was taken for the incentive zoning. Really don't have a lot of zoning issues to work through either, because obviously that incentive zoning uh approval or resolution modification of the zone. It was tailored to exactly what we're trying to create and have submitted for you guys here. Um so for the overall plan, uh we have currently shown on the submitted preliminary overall package, two hundred and twenty two single family homes. Eighty eight townhomes, two hundred and twenty four apartments and a hundred and five uh units within the mixed use building with approximately five thousand square feet. Of commercial space, and I'll come back to those numbers a little bit later as it relates to uh the incentive zoning and and how those numbers uh correspond with what was approved. Uh as part of the I Z for the number of units. For amenities, uh with incentives come amenities, right, so this board weighed in on several of those. The amenities are largely focused on the park, which is to our south and west uh plan lower left on the page. And those include a restroom building, um dollars contributed towards uh a playground. Paving of the trails, the stone dust trails within the park, which are pretty substantial and provide a nice walking areas. And then sidewalk, and there was some discussion with this board, uh if you'll remember when we were here. A few months ago, the sidewalk along the road frontage. Uh being within the bounds of our property are not counted as incentives, because that's a typical requirement. For site plan or subdivision approval, so the stretches along Parkside Drive and Fire Hall Road. Which are along our property frontage are included in the project, but are not part of the incentive package. The sidewalk that is included in the incentive package is a sidewalk along the entirety of the park frontage. And then along Parkside Drive to the signalized intersection at Route three thirty two. Along there, and then one of the items that this board actually asked for that was not included, the original iteration. With the town board package was sidewalk to be included along the school district property. Uh which fronts along Parkside Drive in order to make that connection from our road frontage out to Route three thirty two. So that was subsequently added and we're currently working with town staff. Uh and through town staff with the school district to obtain some easements along that frontage, try to maintain some vegetation for the sidewalk routing. In addition to some of the amenities that I just mentioned. The project still is required to participate in uh paying the parks and rec fees, for example, for each unit uh that comes in. So uh this board had recommended a couple of additional things in their uh. Report back to the town board that ultimately were not selected as incentives, but there are dollars from the project going into a fund that could be utilized for those. That included uh potential for solar or electric car charging stations within the park. Uh wastewater reclamation, which was not something that was uh pursued. And again, sidewalk in front of the school district, which was adopted, so some of the items that were recommended were included and some not. Internal to the site itself, one of this board's recommendations was creating some more green space or open space within the single family home area and uh. We've been able to accommodate that to a certain extent within this development, the original uh single family portion of the subdivision. Was two hundred and thirty units was approved as part of the incentive zoning, we've reduced that to two hundred and twenty two. One of those is taken out by the stub road to the north to allow for potential future expansion, that was something that was also discussed. With the board when we were here before, but those other seven really have been utilized to expand lots in tight corners. Create larger backyards, create some buffering to the spine road at the rear, if you'll notice on Road C, which is roughly in the middle. Of the plan, we've created some green space for some of those backyards to separate that back off uh of the roadway. And really just create, uh I think this board felt that there was some tightness in that single family layout. The other uh piece that we've been able to incorporate is some of the uh open space originally, we had shown as stormwater management facilities within all three of them. Uh one of the larger open spaces that's encircled by Road B on the plan set does not need to have a pond in it, so that'll be just uh. Uh meadow, if you will, or mowed a couple of times a year type thing. Um what we were not able to do is to push large areas of open space further north and west in the site, that's driven by a couple of things. Number one, it's uphill and we couldn't utilize some of that area for stormwater purposes, and so um. That was a challenge in order to try to create open space, but preserve some of the density that's necessary. Uh from that, and so in lieu of that, again, we've tried to make those lots uh spaced out a little bit and take up or provide a little more green space within the properties. Uh secondly, there is no uh H O A, uh Ryan Holmes is gonna be the single family home builder through here. They will have an H O A for the townhomes, but they've indicated to us that an H O A for the single family to maintain portions of open space is not something that they're. Interested in pursuing, so we've kind of tried to strike a balance with what the desires or what we heard from the board when we were here previously. With what we can provide for open space and how do we maintain it, so all of the open space uh that we're showing. On here will be uh kept under ownership, there'll be a separate parcel. And the operation and maintenance of those will fall under the same as the uh townhomes and they're essentially linked. Uh geographically or in close proximity to those from a management standpoint, so we think that we've been able to accomplish. Uh a significant amount of what the board was looking for uh through the efforts that we've taken there. For the apartments in the mixed use, the first phase of that, and in a second I'm gonna switch to a phasing map, but the first phase of that will be along Fire Hall Road. And we've been uh coordinating with the utility owners through this whole process, sewer, water, gas and electric, et cetera. Um sanitary sewer, there's a lift station or pump station right on Fire Hall Lo- Road just south of Airline, which is where our sewer's coming from. That's where we've got to start the project and we think it really works well. Uh the site generally drains from west to east, so that works from a stormwater standpoint, we're gonna build all of our stormwater management facilities. Uh early on in the phase uh to do most of that mass earthwork as well. Complete streets, I know that's something that is very important to the town, supportive of the developer. You'll notice on Road A, uh there are no driveways, there are only roadway intersections on Road A, that was very intentional on our part. To create a complete street with limited cuts to it. Uh there'll be bike lanes on both sides consistent with the town's detail for the complete street for the subdivision version. That'll have sidewalk on both sides of that street as well, we've tried to create some offset crosswalks. Uh with some differentiation um in material, whether that's stamped asphalt or asphalt inlays there. Um there'll be uh, there are substantial tree plantings, uh lighting along the entirety of that spine road as well. Uh that lighting will be consistent with the work of Mr. Fletcher. Um to get the cut sheets for the light poles that are going in on Route three thirty two. Uh currently, um these lights will be the same light poles with a roadway fixture and a pedestrian fixture similar to, or the same. Uh light fixture as out there from a consistency and a visual standpoint. Other lighting and for the rest of the roads. Part of that balance for the incentives and some of the amenities that were offered was uh our uh working with. The town, and I think we discussed this when we were with you last, all of the other roadways will be dedicated. They will not have bike lanes, they'll have sidewalks on one side of the street, we're gonna provide lighting at the intersections, not along all of the. Uh thoroughfares or streets. Uh a couple other miscellaneous items that we have taken into consideration and are uh incorporating. Uh trail connections, so sidewalks along our streets are great, where are they going? We want all of our residents to also interact with the park, bring some life, creativity, use to that park. And so we've provided uh two trail connections, one that connects along the pipeline. Uh which connects Roads A. I have to squint a little bit, I'm sorry, I and H along the south side, you want me to point some?
Please.
Absolutely. So there's a Buckeye Pipeline that runs through, which is why if you look at the aerial, there's no buildings along a pretty long straight line within. The town through this area, so we are proposing a trail that'll connect the sidewalks on all three of those roadways straight through and into the park. And then we also have another uh trail connection uh through and connecting to the loop. Uh as well as obviously the sidewalk connections along the road front, so really trying to create and promote some of that trail. And pedestrian connectivity through the development. Um all of the single family homes are within roughly fifteen hundred square, uh fifteen hundred feet. Of an open space, uh that doesn't mean necessarily the park, but some of the open spaces within the project proper.
Is that, in that trail, what is the finish on on that?
That would be asphalt paved, matching the park trails that we will be paving, that's correct, thanks for the question. Next steps, before I turn it over for what I'm sure will be many questions. Uh as Mr. Nadler mentioned, uh we've got a procedural uh town board appearance on the thirty first in anticipation of that modification on the twenty fourth. And um that pertains just to some language that we did not modify in the incentive zoning as it relate to the underlying code. Uh the form based codes, if you guys have looked at it, shows this entire uh parcels in the uh mixed use sub area. The underlying code and the official zoning map doesn't quite match, so we're just rectifying that, it's kind of a procedural thing. In our plan, being marathons, we are submitting on February third for final section one, so. We've received comments from staff and our goal and why. We've received comments from staff and our goal and why we wanted to continue our uh, schedule of meetings here with you folks. Uh, both now hopefully again in February. Uh, eleventh and then potentially twenty-fifth, which would be the earliest that I believe the town would be able to consider. A preliminary overall approval. Uh, is to get your feedback because we want to incorporate those as we continue to update our plans. And obviously if there are uh, requests for large shifts or large pieces that the board wants to. Uh, us to consider, we want to hear those uh, from you before we get to the point of of submitting for final. A quick phasing, if we could go just to that next uh, diagram. Uh, yeah, right there. So uh, this identifies our proposed phasing for the project. We are anticipating. Uh, five phases now, and a lot of that's going to be driven by demand, of course. The first phase would be uh, outlined in red. Yeah, Jacob, point for us, great. Uh, outline in red. We anticipate that the second phase will be a combination of the green and yellow. Because we will need a second means of ingress to the project for fire code purposes. And we need to break up the spine road in some chunks that make sense from a financial standpoint. That's a road. That we're building with utilities and infrastructure along it, but no houses along it. So we really need to. Uh, be able to phase that in a way that makes sense from a construction. And a dollar standpoint, as we look at the density that we include. In each section. So our final section one submission is going to include everything that's outlined in red there. Again, no changes from what you're seeing in your preliminary overall plan, but just further detail. As is required by the final checklist and the towns, the towns requirements for review. Um, and then last phase, depending on absorption would be uh, the uh, lilac and and purple. Colors. We are starting to run out of options on the P D A, differentiating. Um, and part of that again will be driven by the demand of the single family. Those may need to be phased sooner rather than later, depending on on how large that demand is.
How many is in those last two phases? How many residential houses?
I believe in the northeast quadrant, there's about seventy. Roughly and about fifty-five in the in the lower right-hand uh quadrant there. So. Uh, a little more than half of the total is in those last two phases.
So at some point, can you uh, spell that out either in a note to the plan or a letter? Phase one has this many apartments, this much commercial, this many single family.
What's the current anticipated time line?
So part of the reason for our uh, preparing and submitting our final section one. Plans here coming up is so that we can hit the March meetings for contemplation of.
I'm sorry. Overall build out.
We would love to start construction April fifteenth as soon as the weather breaks. Obviously, we have a lot of things to get done on our side. Outside of our meetings with you folks and our approvals. So we'd love to start construction this summer, which would allow for beginning of house construction late this fall. As well as uh, apartments, which I think is first over mixed use, but we're still working on that phasing. Um, that would allow us to build a community building for the apartments and and some of the apartments. So first phase, I would anticipate. Late spring of twenty-six would probably be the absolute earliest for C of O. Um, and phasing is going to depend on absorption, but we're probably thinking about a ten-year build out somewhere in that neighborhood in total. Hopefully sooner, eight to ten years for full build out somewhere in that neighborhood.
What's the anticipated build out less purple? Essentially, what's the anticipated completion of Road A?
Of Road A? Yeah, I would anticipate that that's uh, five years or less. Those town homes, the second phase of the apartments and the additional single family. And if if uh, green and yellow become a two A, two B or a section two in completeness. A short section of that Road A that was needed to be completed could definitely be considered to be included. We're just not sure yet how quickly those phases are going to follow.
But you're building from your road frontages in.
Correct.
So anything unbuilt will be behind what's already.
That's correct, yeah. Yep, and we have considered in part of our discussion that I'm sure. Uh, the code enforcement officer, et cetera, is going in fire marshal. Uh, we also have considered or contemplated temporary leaving out of a couple of lots for. A secondary connection here that would be gated for emergency vehicles to allow two means of ingress if or ingress if we. Need to get to that point if this is falling behind from a schedule standpoint. Between town homes and additional single families. So I think. This plan gives us a lot of flexibility in making sure that we can provide emergency services to the development as a whole. Uh, no matter which way the phasing goes. So uh, with that, that's that's the overview. Again, we're we're looking for this board's feedback. We hope. That you say we love it and don't change a thing, but um, we've been before the board before, and I'm sure there's things. That we have not uh, contemplated or uh, captured in full from our original discussion. So we'd love to hear from you guys.
Chris, uh, again procedurally. This is a preliminary subdivision, overall subdivision.
Yes.
Do we also have a companion site plan? Review or if and when that occurs?
Uh, I think that's, that would be uh, companion to phase one. Subdivision, final phase one subdivision. And because it's apartment complex, apartment buildings, you'll submit site plans for the apartment buildings along with that.
Each of the apartment buildings is going to be on its own parcel as part of this. So. It's it's really a subdivision application with site plan review wrapped into it. And that's how we've structured our preliminary overall plans as well.
I I just know in the uh, incentive zoning agreement, it talks about it going to a planning board for a site plan. You know, I think something that.
In the agreement?
I think it was in the, yeah.
I think too.
I I just saw a reference to as part of the.
From a, from a checklist and a procedural standpoint, subdivision and site plan are the same checklist application forms within cloud permits.
Yeah, I can see that, yeah. I just didn't want to see, make sure we didn't have a subdivision review and then a site plan review. If we could combine it, that certainly makes sense. And then take it to final.
Yeah.
Based on your section.
And I think one, one sheet of your application, one sheet of the plan should be a site plan. It should be labeled site plan so people can see where it's going. Sometimes it's confusing for people looking at a subdivision.
Yeah, so in our complete plan set, which we submitted to you folks, we have the subdivision flats, obviously, but we've got site plans, grading. Uh, landscaping, all of the components of that, of that site plan requirement.
All thirty-seven sheets.
There's a few pages, yes. Final section one will be shorter, but not by much.
Put a strain on my computer today. So I really never got to all the way to the back into the detail sheets. The right of way and cartway bits of the complete streets. Uh, is that on your detail sheets in the later part of the package? Again, I couldn't get there to.
It is, yeah.
See it. So you have a typical section.
All the roadways will be dedicated, they're town of Canadega sections, road sections, details for all the roadways.
You know of him what the right of way was proposed for Road A, where the complete streets from the spine road?
Were the physical features of it or the? I think it's eight feet, but um.
So we have a.
So it meets our standard.
Correct.
I saw it in there somewhere. And the right of way, again, since the other roads are going to be dedicated for the. Side roads and non-spine road, that's. We're going to move, open the comments. Very simple thing that though I have to a statement. Uh, I appreciate you uh, listening to us and adding the green space. That was one of my comments last time. And I see over near Road A, as you access Matthew, there's one additional green space that wasn't there last time. Uh, and also the pond areas. I understand you're now going to be green space. Because it shows ponds in your pictures later on in.
Yes, so. Uh, if I can clarify here. These two open spaces are both stormwater management facilities.
So there'll be ponds.
This does not have a pond.
Right.
That's open space.
That's new.
And then there's uh, additional stormwater management facilities.
Are those ponds and dry ponds?
They will have, their retention ponds will have water in them. So that's a TBD at this point.
On just on your sheet one, it just says open space. And I mean, if I looked at it, I wouldn't, I'd want to see that that's going to be a pond. Uh, because that's what I'm looking at for, I'm living over here, for open space. And I appreciate the fact that you did. Lose some houses there on Road A to give that open space and that you said that you're going to have. Uh, maintenance agreement with all that too. That's great. One bad thing that happened when you rearranged, you, it took away one of the access points to. The park from the connection between C and B road. Uh, there used to be a connection there to the park. Uh, so anybody in B and C. A has to go all the way to A to get that one or all the way back around to the pipeline. It just seems so much, I mean, smarter thought process to. Somewhere near C, B intersection to put us something through there. Uh, to connect to the park.
Like where, essentially where that orange line, orange and yellow.
Yes, yeah, right.
Yeah, it's pretty much that. Trail or lot seven and eight roughly, but.
Right. That was a.
Take a look at that.
That was there in the first one. You mentioned lights. Uh, at the intersections, would you put one at the possible new access point to the north there? Would that be a light thought?
That's a good question. I don't think we thought about that. I think we'd push that to the developer of the north parcel if and when they come in, but we can have that discussion.
Well, that'd be, I would think that would be fair because not, not going to use that for that access. We've had a, we had a project come through here about a year ago with a pipeline through it. And there was a fifty-foot easement that you couldn't build on that or near that. How does that affect with your pavement? Because you can build on the pipeline even then.
Yep, so pavement sidewalks can be installed across it. They have very specific rules about how much fill, cut, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
We've had initial discussions with the uh, Buckeye Pipeline rep already. And uh, we're going to coordinate some test pits to find out how much cover so that we can nail down those details. When we told them that was our second or third section, he said, oh, okay, call me when you're ready. Um, so it sounds like. Uh, because we're not approaching with any structures, meaning houses, anything like that. And he sent us a copy of his regulations for us to consider. We don't anticipate any issues for that.
I believe they had to have the, they have to approve it, right?
That's correct.
We have to have that.
Yeah.
Apartment, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, copy that. And then certainly, um, a landscape plan, that'd be the only thing I'd ask for.
So we submitted landscape drawings in your package, so for some reason you didn't get them, that's uh.
No, they're in their lighting and landscape plans. After some details, some cut sheets.
After the profiles, yeah, that's correct. So, so we did uh, try to represent what we're trying to create from a streetscape standpoint. Because again, I know that's very important to this board and and kind of following the intent of the complete streets. When we went and met with the uh, environmental conservation board, we reviewed this with them and uh, they encouraged us to. Maybe expand some of our tree species selections outside of the list that's in the form-based code. Um, and I know they. Were eager to take another look at it when we came back in with final section one, where we'll have some plant material selection detail and that kind of thing versus just the generic. Selection list, but um, yeah, I do think that info is there, so.
I am, that's it for me. Appreciate what you've done already and listening to us.
Oops, anybody else?
What Bob said and the appreciation. Answered a lot of our questions. So thank you.
So I echo Bob on the connection, internal connection, many internal connections you could make to that park, I think would be better. Uh, because it's. It's a long way from those residential houses over to that park. And I think, you know. The more foot track, traffic you can keep off of Fire Hall or um, the other roads, the better. Um, the only other question I had probably for our planners is that. Is there sufficient parking currently at the park for a full build out? Of something this size or is the town looking to having to expand?
I'm not privy to some of those conversations about the usage of the park facility. Um, when we did the twenty eighteen master plan many years ago now. Uh, it wasn't an issue. And I don't think that that would have been preceding the uptown plan, so it wasn't really thought of as that. So I'm not exactly sure, but to your point about creating additional connections. If you can make it more walkable to get there, the best likely to see the demand of residents to drive a few hundred feet over.
Well, I'd like the bike trails, so so people would be encouraged to use their bikes to make that trip over to the pond.
Matt, can you comment, uh, you know, as a rough estimate as an engineer, we could, the town could add some parking there. I'm assuming it's gravel parking.
Yeah, abs- absolutely. And I, yeah, it is. It's it's not, there's no significant grade concerns from that standpoint. And again, I think. Uh, this will be a phased construction, so I think um, there'll be an opportunity for the town to. Observe over time as units are brought in. And again, each unit that comes in is going to contribute to the. The Parks and Rec Fund and there'll be a significant amount of dollars based on the number of units that comes in. Available for improvements if if the demand is there from from future residents of the town.
Amazing. Maintenance questions. Well, in terms of phasing, I think these are big bites and I'm assuming in the middle of the way through. You know, phase one, A, B, C, D, or not, but. Uh, my concern is getting the spine road completed. Um, you've got. The, the, a big chunk of it as part of your last phases. Um, you know, one thing I'd like to see is the phases broken down by numbers. But also by letters of credit slash surety bond. Um, and I think the. Final phase one is going to require bond for all of Road A. Um, because it's fundamental. To this and obviously you don't need to put dollar notes in at this point, but. Um, I think that. Uh, you know, if. The worst happens, and this is what the planning board is supposed to do is is factoring what happens if, you know. Everybody gets hit by a bus and and phase five never gets built. To growth at that end.
Right, same one.
Um, and so you want to, you want to account for that, what's going to happen at what, or quite frankly. You know, I think we, we know these developers and and trust them to do a good job, but if. They sell it off to somebody else who says, well, it's a pretty expensive road. I'm not going to do it. I can just make a little cut through here. And uh, so you know, you, one of the things we're going to want to know is at what point does the town say, all right. You promised us a big spine road, a complete street. We're going to do it for you and charge, charge your letter. That's one of the issues that I, I think what the board would find useful is you proposing. That in for those deadlines and for that little letter, for your purpose. Um, and then maintenance of the open spaces in the stormwater. Um, and the trail. It sounded like you said that HOA is going to ma- manage the stormwater for the whole project.
Uh, there will be a management company associated with the apartment and mixed use building, so it will not be. It'll be, those will be retained under ownership by the developers and their. Maintenance agreement, maintenance contract, whatever you will, is going to be responsible for those open spaces as part of. Uh, ownership because ownership will remain in the same entity as the apartments.
So all four of these lots?
Yep, there's five, but yes.
It'll be responsible for this, this. This and this.
That's correct, yeah. And and the open space that won't have a pond in it. Correct.
This one will be HOA. This one will be HOA.
Uh, we have not decided that. Uh, the cleanest may be to have it. Stay in with everything else, but, um, that hasn't been determined.
Okay. Oh. That's, we're gonna have to flesh those details out. Um, the town obviously wants somebody to hold accountable.
Yep.
Um.
And yeah, there'll be the normal stormwater maintenance agreements that are filed and everything else.
That's true.
Okay.
I just had two more things about, sorry. Uh. Mailboxes at the house or centrally located?
Mailboxes at the house or on the townhouse, at the townhouses.
So you don't have to pull off. Appreciate the traffic study. Quite in-depth study there. Um. Good thing you did that already. Proved that it didn't was a very big of an impact.
Yep. That was part of the secret review, so we had to get that out of the way early on.
It was good. Um. Public bus stops. For public transportation, anything like that on there?
We do not have any, and I apologize that I don't know off the top of my head as to whether or not this is within the, uh, on-demand zone. Uh, for RTS or not?
No, I don't remember.
Community destination.
That's true.
Yeah. So I'm not aware of any, any, uh, plans for that. Typically, they revisit their stops every so often and, um. You know, where riders come from, that's where they, that's where they relocate their stops. I believe there's one, maybe Parkside and Canal Road twenty-eight for.
First one there at the Veterans Apartments, one there. Oh, in station.
Yeah, Charles, yeah, Charles Station is at Canal Road twenty-eight there.
Matt, I was looking at, I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
I was looking at some of the referrals that we did with this application. Um. Obviously, we went to our code department. I know you're working with them regarding the. Any changes, recent changes in the building code. It's not something that's specific to the site plan and the subdivision, but it's certainly something that you're gonna have to deal with. Part of building permits. Um. You've been working with Jim Fletcher on the highway. And making sure that the streets, uh. Meet his requirements because he's the one that's gotta maintain them moving forward. I know. Farmington Water just recently submitted a review of the twenty-third.
Yep.
Uh, and I guess you have to deal with those issues. Uh, you mentioned sanitary store. You're okay with the county. Did you do your capacity analysis? And that, that, I think you did a capacity analysis if there's adequate, uh. Capacity in the interceptors and the pump station.
Yeah, so we met with the county. They're actually excited that we're building this because right now that pump station was built to handle a lot more flow anticipating development than currently goes to it. So this development is really gonna help that pump station function better than. Uh, it does currently. So we're working with with Tim and Jack over at the county. Uh, DPW to to on those reviews currently.
Okay. And really, nine dot, uh, park transportation, uh, highway. Uh, something about three thirty-two pedestrian connection?
When we make the connection, we'll have to get a permit for the sidewalk work that ends up in the right way. Yep. So it's a pretty small section, but it it is in the three thirty-two right way.
Okay, uh, county planning board, you were at that meeting?
Uh, we talked to Linda actually in advance since they left it as a, I think a type one or a. Um, but they, they had seen it as part of the incentive zoning and given their recommendations then, so they really didn't have much new to add.
They had mentioned, and I think the egg committee also mentioned a buffer to the ag land. It's a possibility. Uh, I, I'm not sure exactly along which.
I believe they're talking about.
By the north side.
To the north property. And there is, there is a decent buffer on the adjacent parcel, uh, between that field and the property line. And, uh, of course, the single-family homeowners will be able to plant, put up fences, whatever they want to supplement their their property with.
The ECB had mentioned the possibility of a dog park?
Yes.
Um, and I know you responded at the meeting, I guess, uh. The possibility of, uh. Canines at the apartments, I guess, more than anything else. And is it something you've thought about since the meeting or?
Uh, it's not an amenity that we're proposing to install for the single-family or. From strictly mostly from a maintenance or who's gonna run it without an HOA standpoint. Um. The apartments, I think that's an amenity that we're looking into potentially providing. Um, but again, that that hasn't been decided yet, but that.
How many units of apartments are you putting in?
Two hundred and twenty-four, I believe, is the number.
You guys sound right.
Yes. In total. There's about twenty-eight per. Twenty-eight per building. Yeah, not kind of mixed-use buildings, are. Yep.
The ECB also brought up, uh. Possibility of encouraging solar use. I guess. Whether it be part of the homes. Or the, uh, other buildings, the. The more commercial buildings, I don't know, it's something to look at or?
Uh, systems haven't really been selected yet for those units, but we'll explore potential for that.
Energy credits available if you. Provide any type of permanent. Energy?
Uh, I'm sure there are. I know for the apartment buildings being only, uh, twenty-eight units, they don't really have the roof size to allow for a real large, uh, proponent. They're also angled roofs, not flat roofs. So, uh, from an aesthetic standpoint, I'm not sure that's. Where we wanna go, but that mixed-use building may have some more opportunity to it just because it's a larger building.
I just wanna make sure we. Think about it anyway.
Yeah.
Maybe in your designs too. And I guess ECB also, uh, you know, mentioned planning and lighting, make sure stocks are compliant. Uh, I guess you're waiting for a review from MRB.
Yeah, our apologies on the delay in getting that to you. We have a lot of comments. Um. Not many that the planning board really needs to get to tonight, I don't think, but we're gonna be requesting more information as to that drainage, uh, so we can appropriately review that. Um, but a few that. Might be of interest to the planning board. You've already touched on the one that we're gonna suggest as far as the. Connection gear. Um. But. The planning board might also consider. This block being. Uh, substantially larger than the town's apartment. It's a twelve hundred feet or something like that, but. In the subdivision standards, you know, creating more walkability and the uptown plan says a six hundred foot block. Maximum is what it is. That one's substantially larger than that. And then. Depending on what they're setting up being here, it's, you know, you have a pocket park here called out, all that is open space. If you're a lot here, you've got a lot. Um, does it make sense that one? Unless you don't go back there instead of walking further. You know, thinking about the planning board's perspective, any other pedestrian permeability throughout the different blocks. Uh, to make it more walkable, reducing that, those distances. Not necessarily creating streets, but whether it's just a. Fifteen-foot wide. Pedestrian, their connections. But that to you all.
Okay, so we're looking forward to that review. Uh, and the egg committees. They, they said there's no risk to active farm land because I guess it hasn't been farmed in many years, so. Um. And related to the existing property, there are no NRI features on the property.
As amazing as that is.
No flood lanes, no steep slopes.
Covering up one other thing.
My woods. I guess you.
The town go generally for this through lots or double fronted lots, we have just a few of them there. Um, again, just for your consideration about whether, you know, this one. Part of that, so whether you want fences on that prominent roadway, um. Just something for you to consider.
That's what I was thinking about landscaping, how that would be landscaped and. I'm still looking for, that's what I would.
But it relates to maintenance and. I think we're proposing a lot of, but if you treat along that, uh, eight or the weed street, so that that would assist in kind of giving that off our deals.
Is that showing on your?
Can we, can we pull down to the landscape plan, just one of the bottom sheets there, we just took a quick look at that together? Uh. Up one, right there. Yeah, so we're showing the street tree rhythm there. I think that if there's a desire for us to add some additional, maybe a second layer of trees or something of that nature, we definitely could consider that if it's a. Concern of the board, um, could potentially also put some type of. Of an easement through there that restricts sheds and fences or something of that nature, but, um. The through lot, you know, creating a skinny. Uh, piece of property there to prevent the through lot, I don't think avoids too much the intent. Um, and in this instance, it would be orphaned on the other side. We have it connected to kind of a larger open space that could be maintained. By the HOA or or the mixed-use property by wrapping around. Uh, this one would be create kind of a orphaned parcel, so. That's why we left it off.
I believe the through lots restriction is waivable and playing.
Mm hmm.
Um, yeah, I think that's the appropriate focus. And are you ultimately proposing like easements along some of the stormwater structure that's in the background, so you know it's not showing on the plans that? So, uh, again, this is not. You don't need this for the next meeting, but before. We get into the issuing approvals. What I'd like to see is an overall. General location of easement, stormwater easement, second thing. Like with colors, um. Because ten years from now. There's gonna be a crew of town staff consultants who are gonna try to be trying to figure it out. And just something that can be referred back. Oh, yeah, this is the drainage. This.
Mm hmm.
That kind of thing.
Yeah, our, our final section one plans will have, uh, utility easements on the flats, uh, for consideration. We can work with you on like a.
Chi chi one, two.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Um. What about sheds, that kind of thing? Are these people gonna want sheds? And is that? Okay on these small lots? And is that gonna be? So I guess I don't remember whether it's like a rear setbacks or anything.
So sidebacks, side setbacks are five feet. And, um, I believe that's both for incentive, uh, principle as well as accessory structures. Don't believe that there are any restrictions. As it relates to having the sheds and rear setbacks for. The single families. I think we kept the same as the original, just forty feet, but I'll have to find that here in just a minute.
I guess, I guess that's what I'm saying. Do you have forty feet in these backyards?
I'm sorry, the rear is twenty feet, twenty foot setbacks in the rear yards. Typical lot is approximately a hundred and twenty feet deep, so there's, there is room for, uh, sheds and.
So in all the general, the amount of pot size. Okay, actually both are rooms, larger and neither way third line.
Matt, I think you had mentioned that the, uh. The amenities you're relying will be part of phase one, all of them.
I believe the condition as it's written is that all amenities must be installed prior to the first C of all.
Yep.
Um, one of the only. Uh, I'll call it undefined is there's a dollar amount, I believe, associated with the playground specifically. Uh, versus installation, um, so that one may not be installed, but obviously the contribution will have to be made to the town by installation.
Okay. Um, let's go. We have a lot of folks online and here. Uh, anyone want to address the board regarding this application? Any question you may have, please address it to us. And or any comments? And sir, I'll take you. If you come up and give us your name and address.
Well, we have.
Sure, voting is yours.
Yeah, my name's Jim Hecker. I live over in Emerson. Uh, just because of the. Got a little bit of history with this area upstairs. Uh. The Buckeye Pipeline that they refer to, just to make sure the board understands. That's a liquid petroleum, could be gasoline, could be aviation fuel, running pretty close to eight hundred pounds pressure. So, and it's just, that's just an information. The property to the north has three other pipelines on it. One of them is a twenty-four inch line, and that runs close to two thousand pounds pressure. That's the property to the north. Yep, so, but there's three pipelines on that all high pressure. I just wanna make sure you know what we're building houses in, in and around. Uh, and I'm not. I'm not downplaying the fact that pipelines are the safest way to transport that type of product. So I'm not downplaying that. I just want the board to be aware of it, and MRB, because you rely on them to do all your reviews.
Mr. Hecker, by the way, you're Jim Fletcher's predecessor.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Uh, the next thing, Blue Heron Park. Uh, Blue Heron Park, uh, the ponds were built as a stormwater management facility. Uh, prior to Route three thirty-two being widened out before lanes. Um, Blue Heron Park takes in all the drainage on three thirty-two coming from, um, right about by the American Legion. It's actually just a little bit, uh, south of the American Legion, but only by. Maybe a hundred feet, outside Mid Lakes Drive. That all comes to the north. Reason that was built is because you know where the office buildings are on the south side of Parkside Drive. Those stormwater management, uh, ponds were built because the parking lots in in those office buildings flooded. And the county had offices in there and several county employees had flood damage to their cars. This was during the day. All of this water. Flows north, uh, towards Emerson Road. And it goes through a. Well, stormwater management is doing its job as things go today. When you add everything in, just make sure everything is reviewed so the, the, uh, water going in. Is regulated, so it doesn't increase the flow out. Um. The drainage swale going to the north. As, uh, as recent as December of twenty twenty-four. At a beaver dam that, uh, Jim Fletcher's crew had to go out and clean out. Uh, that beaver dam raised the level of the water in that drainage ditch. By about two feet. In about two days. So they get in there and they do their job and. Beavers are one of, one, the wonders of nature.
My way department is now keeping beavers.
Should we start naming beavers?
Yes, but anyways, that, that water continues across Emerson Road, goes down through the Gun Club property. Um, was down through, yeah, in my house. And then it, it actually sometimes causes problems, uh, causes potential problems where it crosses under Rissa Road. Uh, so this drainage area needs a lot of study by MRB group and needs to. Needs special care. It's very delicate now. It needs to make sure there's extra attention paid to that. And then the last thing I've got. I heard, heard you talking about putting parking there at Blue Heron Park. Blue Heron Park was never meant to be a great big park with a lot of, you know, doesn't have a lot of room for parking. It was meant to be a stormwater management area with a little bit of passive recreation and that walking trail around. So. Uh, thank you for listening and please take it into consideration.
Thanks for your comments. Thank you. Sir, uh, did, did, how did, how did that area fare with the heavy rains we had? Uh.
Last night.
Uh. The bridge behind my house almost washed out. How's that?
Almost.
And, uh, you know, that's, that's a bridge that's for access. Well, it's for hunting access in in my property, but. Um. I maintain that. I, I go down and I. Clean any of the dead ash trees that fall into the stream and I clean them out usually every year. Um, getting a little old, it might have to get a piece of equipment in there to take them out, but.
But you, you are correct. We don't want to make it any worse than, I think that's, we wanna make sure we control it, so.
And, and the ash trees that have died along that streambed all the way from Emerson Road all the way to Rissa Road in the end, uh, there's a lot of, it caused a lot of problems, so.
Thank you.
Alright.
Anyone else here? Yes, sir. Kimmy, got anybody out there? Raise your hands.
Hi, Pam McKellar, I live at fifty-two oh five Emerson Road.
Sure.
I'm on the backside of the property there. Um, a couple of things is the density of the, the, uh, development. I mean, we're in a rural town, right? But this is city stuff. This is like putting a lot of houses in a small area. Um, the height wise, like some of the buildings were four stories, five stories. Um. You know, to put that in. Town, you've got three thirty-two, which has got the car dealerships and all of that, and you wanna put this stuff behind it to raise it up. You know, I mean, cost, how much are they gonna cost for the apartments, you know, the rent and that type of stuff? Is it affordable housing? Is it, you know? How much are we gonna get for people coming in here? How much are we gonna get for people coming in here? It's type of stuff. I know that there's a uh huge need for housing. I know this is gonna be developed. This is kind of crazy for being a town of Canada Day, while we're putting this huge development in the the center of it. Park size, like you were saying, the park, that's a small park. You're putting in, what, three thousand people coming to use this? You're not increasing the size of the park. There's no place to put more park because they've got it all jammed full of houses. Um the other thing is the snowmobile trail that goes on the north side. There's no access now for that snowmobile trail. They have in there the other one on the the east side that will get down to Eric's office. That's that's not there. There's no buffer there for for any of that type of stuff. And what is the fire department saying as far as uh, you know, we have that little firehouse there. But to get in here or anything like that is, you know, what is the cost of that gonna be uh as far as covering all that type of stuff? Um and then the homeowners association, as far as who's gonna take care of these houses? Who's gonna make sure that all these houses are so close together that the up? The upkeep of these houses is taken care of and who's gonna take care of the complaints and that type of stuff? You know, they're they're putting it right at the back of the property lines, so I'm gonna be looking at, you know, people's throwing stuff over there if they put fences in or. Wandering back there with their dogs on my property. I don't want that. I wanna have some buffer in there, but uh. I don't see that happening. There's many houses they're putting in and those people in the backside, you get all the way down to the front side. You know, where's the, where's the space for them to go and have a place for their kids to play? My property, you know, I mean, that's, that's where I come in with this uh thing. And then they have the upper, the upper northeast corner there, that's wet. That water runs all down through the side of my property. Across Emerson Road into some ponds on the other side. So, you know, he was saying it goes west to east and it does, so there'll be plenty of water going through there.
And then. Concerned about additional runoff onto your.
I'm worried I'm worried about the runoff on the property and and then the the uh keeping the people out of of my property also. The other thing was just the sense of community. There's no community center or anything like that, no pool for these people. Are they gonna go down to the lake? Is that? Kind of where these people are going to recreate, because you can't swim in in the ponds there. You know, there's no sense of community showing other than everybody lives ten feet apart. I think that's pretty much it. So thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments. I made notes and I'm sure the applicant has made notes.
I also thought it was true that the original, that the original ones that they had. From nineteen and then twenty-one were a lot less than what they're showing now. And they were showing two two-story, maybe three stories. We're looking at five-story apartments now. Even with the density were quite considerably lower, even on Mr. Cook's twenty-one uh with the mobile homes. And then the original one in nineteen is considerably less than that. So to to get information. From what's going on here, see, this is the first bit of information that we're really seeing is they talk to the town. Say, have a website now, but at least when Mr. Finch was here, he was running this thing and it's his baby. He would have things going on. Hey, come out and talk to me. We had the airport, we had the uh. The one here and then uh I think the sidewalk where I talked to Sarah, when they were talking about where sidewalks is. Uh I talked to her, she didn't know anything of that kind of part. That wasn't what we're here to do, I guess, but it's been hard to get information.
How many acres do you have, Peter?
Or nineteen point oh five or something like that.
I I have fourteen acres, I'd say. And and they're gonna, we have a hard time with them from the apartments that are existing, walking out through there and coming out. And, you know, coming out with vehicles out there, they're doing all kinds.
Yes, um we, I'm Jerry Sakes. We live on County Road uh twenty-eight, but I have property off of Emerson Road. So I'm right next to Pete and I have fourteen acres there and it. Uh the migration of these people are gonna be over in there and it's gonna be. Confrontational at minimum, because it isn't gonna happen. We're gonna be out there standing vigilant against this. You know, people trespassing.
Your property is currently used for.
It's open ag, yeah, recreation, open, just open ag. It's farmed.
Oh, it's farmed?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yours, your property as well, Peter, farm?
It's right now, it's just recreation. I have the pipelines going through that. I have a high tension power lines.
Then those pipelines are red long, that that would be not far off of that.
Or did you get their addresses? Okay, anyone else want to address the board regarding this application? Sir, right in front.
My name's Robert Collins. I'm currently the president of the Canada Sportsman Club. Located on Emerson Road and I don't know if it will, I don't know if it won't. But a lot of times these developments pop up. We're a shooting club. I mean, we're out there uh during the hours of daylight. You know, uh firing our firearms and we just want, you know, I don't know if it will happen. But I just wanna make the the board aware that these things do happen, but you know, noise, whatever. So just want that to be known. Thank you.
How close is the shooting club to this property?
It's up on Emerson Road, you uh from north.
Yeah.
And take a right, it's right.
On the north side.
We're right next to Mr. Hecker.
Are you gonna be, it's gonna be loud? Sixty hundred feet.
I'd say within a quarter of a mile, yeah. I mean, you have shooting events up there.
They live operating hours.
Yes, we do. I'm just, you know, at nine A M, that's, you know, until dusk. That's, you know.
Have you ever had any complaints from the neighbors?
We have, but it's 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 not. They're honorary members of the club. That's. But, you know, this is kind of like a. A good thing, bad thing. Maybe we'll get some membership out of there, but.
But probably not every single lot owner.
Yeah, I I don't, if if. Five percent, I would be ecstatic.
I have a question. Um do you do any events at night?
No, we don't.
So it's just nine A M?
At dusk, uh thirty minutes uh prior to dusk. Of rules we're supposed to, you're supposed to shut down.
I I know some clubs are late.
Yeah, yes. Well, we do have a a five stand. I don't, we haven't been using it lately, but we're trying to, you know, utilize our facility more now. I I'm not saying, you know, I would let the board know if we do. But we do have a lit range.
You do have a lit.
Yes, you do.
You just, you're not currently.
What is currently not utilized?
And I I don't know what the rules are, but they're entitled to use their range for whatever they're legally allowed to. I don't know if there's a permit in place that has restrictions or not, but without having that specific information, assume that. They're allowed to use it at certain night hours.
Anyone else here? There, anywhere? Okay, um. Well, I think, uh, Matt. Obviously, you're you're coming back to see us at the next meeting. It's the eleventh.
That's the plan.
Okay, I will get a little more detail. Hopefully, we'll have some of these reviews back from MRB and from uh. Code and.
If the eleventh, though, no approval to be granted to that, just a discussion because of the town board.
Yeah, I think the schedule I saw was uh action would be taken like the following eight, right?
Twenty-fifth. So I I guess what I would offer is we're happy to come back if there are additional. Things that we haven't discussed that the board is looking for. I think some of the items like the trails, some additional landscape buffering, that's easy for us to incorporate. And we can come back on the twenty-fifth with that, but if you'd like an interim meeting where we can expound on anything that you haven't seen yet. We'd be happy to come on the eleventh. Uh we haven't touched on architecture. I don't know if there's any desire.
Yeah, that's sort of like, I'd like to talk about that one more, too.
Okay.
Terms of the multi-use and.
Well, our our goal really is to try to have the potential for a a preliminary approval on the twenty-fifth. Understanding that it might have to go to the first March meeting or what have you. Um so if we can come on the eleventh and talk about architecture and some of those other things. We would like the opportunity to do so, so we can address those comments that may or may not come from the board.
I do have a question. In your opinion, is there enough room on that, along that one property to put a vegetative buffer?
Yes.
On the back.
Yeah, those lots, those lots are a hundred and forty feet deep on the north side, I believe. I can confirm that. And uh the front setbacks are only twenty-five feet as part of incentive zoning. So we are trying to make sure that we provide enough. Um for folks to do things in their backyard that they wanna do. Uh I know that they are small lots as it compares to some of our surrounding neighbors to the north and to the east, but that's intentional. Um and I I can answer a couple of these questions, maybe not all of them. If that, if you'd like me to.
Sure, the folks are here if you have a response.
So from from an uh, so from a stormwater standpoint, uh we are not utilizing any of the capacity or otherwise within the park. Uh obviously, that is the low point, so we are uh discharging our stormwater management facilities to it. But our project is going to stand alone from a stormwater management standpoint, meaning water quality and quantity. And I'm sure many of the comments that MRB has coming at us uh are related to stormwater, uh which we'll of course address. We have to get uh MS four uh sign off, which is the responsible offer officer for the town before we get our D E C permits for stormwater. So we will be in full compliance with those and one of those regulations is discharging less than those uh offsite today, at least from a rate standpoint. So we will, we will definitely be in compliance with that. Uh density and height, as this board knows, that form-based code is extremely permissive. This is substantially less dense. Than the form-based code permits uh to be done as part of our incentive zoning application we had done and as a bright layout. Which can be done a lot of different ways uh with over fifteen hundred units uh just showing uh comparable densities. That's permitted within the code without going through an incentive zoning process. So while this is dense, especially compared to the land use it is now, uh we're substantially less than could be put on the site. By by what the town has put in place from a zoning perspective. Um not affordable, everything's market rate. Uh obviously, the townhomes and single family will be for sale, um and those will be. Uh market rate for for the Ryan Homes product that they build. Uh and then fire department, all designed per code. That's one of uh many of Mike's comments that we need to address from a code enforcement standpoint. Um compliance with the fire code obviously is required before building permits are pulled, et cetera. So we'll be making sure that we're fully in compliance with all of that. I think the rest were more comments than than questions, but those are the ones that I had noted to give you an answer on.
All right. Would have any other questions, suggestions for that? If not, uh we'll reconvene on the uh the eleventh, so we'll continue the, I guess this is a hearing. It was advertised a hearing. Substitution, yeah. I think there might be some changes, not major, but. So uh I have a motion to continue the public hearing of this application to the eleventh of February. I'll move to continue it to the eleventh. Uh motion second to get, does that second Tim?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, all in favor? All right, thanks everyone. Thanks. I'm just uh. If I can't, uh let's, if I can't open. I'd really like to see some of the, you know, later plans and details uh on that, the the uh sheet, the package.
Could you send that broken up?
Yeah, I was thinking that like a eleven by seventeen.
How strong are your glasses?
I'll get a full set.
Send them to Sarah and you coordinate giving them or?
Okay.
Bob, do you need a full set?
It would be nice on these large projects to have them. I did it on the solar and helped me.
I'll be okay electronically. Thank you, Mister.
You're good?
So we'll send three or four full size and a couple eleven by seventeen. You guys can use them if you need them.
That'd be great. Okay, uh the last item on the review agenda is. Twenty twenty-four one fifty-one is a town board referral. Uh regarding manufactured homes. Mike, you mind uh going over what the uh amendment to the code encompasses?
Mike Murphy, uh he's muted.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
All right. So it's a pretty simple amendment. Primarily, it is just going in the same. Pathway as reducing the minimum square footage for residential construction. Uh this will allow for the placement of what's commonly referred to as single wides. Uh within all permitted zoning districts. Currently, town code only allows single wide manufactured homes within zone manufactured home parks. Uh whereas this amendment will allow it within all zoning districts where single family residential is a permitted use.
Mike, as of, just as what I read, make sure it's right. They have to sit on a concrete foundation. Is that correct?
So they have to sit on a permanent foundation.
Permanent foundation.
Yeah.
Yep. Not on wheels.
It's skirt.
Yep. Okay, uh would have any questions of? You know, what the amendment, do you have any concerns about the?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I I think that doing this would severely impact the value of residential housing in this town. And I am emphatic against it. I think that the potential for a special use permit. In the few cases that this may come up. Uh would be an appropriate compromise. Uh my fear, my concern is that if if we were to eliminate this as part of our codes. We could get a development proposal that is a right by law that everyone is surprised. In sheer number of manufactured homes. I don't think it's consistent with the character, rural character of the town and future development for the town.
Murph, does, so currently, you said currently it's all, they're only allowed in manufactured in the zoning district, manufacturer home district? Or do we have uh these types of homes in other districts through the town?
So currently, the classification of a single wide is only allowed within a manufactured home zoning district. That's partly due to the actual lot coverage, um the lot size and all of that. So this wouldn't change, you know, say for example, AR two, it would still have to be a two acre lot. But then that parcel owner could opt for a single wide to be placed on their parcel.
How's that differ from a modular home, which we're seeing built? Quite frequently, built in Cheshire, not too long ago.
Yeah.
Uh modular is licensed underneath New York State Department of State. Manufactured home is approved by New York State Department of State, but it's licensed through HUD at a federal level. That's really the only difference.
But they're, the state, from a planning board aspect, from a tech, from a resources aspect, are they the same structures?
Yes.
That's not my experience.
No.
I I I would say that uh I originally resided in Hudson Valley. I, I, I would say that uh, I originally resided in Hudson Valley. In Hudson Valley, at least sixty-five percent of the homes erected, single residential family homes were modular. Anywhere from two to four unit homes, full two-story colonial homes. They come in, they're prefabricated, they have roof sections that go onto them as well. Um, that's a module. It's different than manufactured housing as it's defined here.
Okay, the major differences, how's it come in? Via crane or via wheels?
Crane.
I mean, that's the problem. Mo- mobile homes are coming in with wheels, then put on a permanent foundation. I think that's the only really. That come in on a crane? It was a double wide. Put it on foundation.
The uh, development next to the um, the hammocks. They brought modulars, modular.
Yeah, yeah, that was a model.
That, those are modulars. Manufactured housing will trail. Typically have flattened.
So your concern, Tim, is the aesthetics or the safety of the units?
No, my, my concern is that type of housing as a zone is already defined in our zone code. And I, my concern is that people invest in property. Based on the character of the community that they're investing. And I don't think that style of housing, I, I think that the zone code already has identified. That style of housing is being significantly different. So that's, that's where.
And it should be, and you're saying it should be restricted where it's placed.
It, it currently has a restriction. I think that if there are. If you, if you use a special use permit for the occasion that. Someone wants to put one of these units up, then it gives the opportunity for the neighboring properties. To comment on whether it's objectionable or not. I think you go through Seeger to identify whether it's within the character that you move or not. So, for instance, if you have, if you have um, a large family. That has a lot of property, that wants to sub it. And this type of housing, we have the opportunity for them to put it in and the neighbors are okay with it. That's a special use permit process. I think that's more, I, I think that's a better. Path forward to accommodate a very small percentage of that type of housing that will be desired in this town.
Okay. So I think what you're saying is it should be not allowed. Your recommendation is that it not be allowed in, in every zoning district, but in. Certain districts. I think what you're saying is it can be allowed in any.
Residential.
With, with oversight.
Special use.
With that process. We use special use permits.
Right now, they're identified as different uses or different. Uses in the, in the code, in the zoning code. So yeah, you could, you could add a special use. You could make it, you know, under permitted uses, so single-family homes under our code right now, that does not include. Uh, manufactured housing. It could say manufactured housing under A permitted uses or. C, special use.
Well, on one hand, we're trying to make housing more affordable and certainly manufactured homes are more affordable than a conventional. Conventional stick home.
Defined, we have not defined for.
However. And to counter this, it's, it's not just. The house that's put on whatever type of house, it's put on the land. So someone buys a lot, it could be four acres or forty. If they're putting a manufactured house on it versus a, you know, regular traditional house. I, 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 and I, I don't think I agree with your argument about the. Kind of the, the character and, and bringing down property values. I think the property values come from more so the land. And the type of house. And I think the manufactured house makes the land and kind of make what you are. Potentially. Affordable. For. Potential residents or existing residents that are renting, that are looking for. A way to. Have a piece of the American dream, if you will.
There's uh.
Be able to buy.
Share with you guys too, there's a New York State. Department of State local government guidance on municipal regulation, manufactured housing. Gets into the difference between manufactured and modular homes. And also kind of some of the restrictions that New York State has on how municipalities can regulate manufactured homes.
Okay. I think, I think, just to say what you're saying, Tim. One, if this board agrees, they agree, we do the both, we do the code, it's done. Then the town. Public don't have anything to say about. Which I don't like having anyways. This way, the way you're saying is that the town, the residents. Can say something about it. To have a say, which I think is important for the town to have, town residents to have a say. And what they're, what they're being built around them. So.
Comment on the change in code. Yeah, but. What you're saying, if you live in Lakewood Meadows, right now, you're probably not going to show up and say, hey, let's not have this town code.
Right.
But if someone burns their, if their house burns down, they said, I'm not going to rebuild a. A two-story colonial with four bedrooms and two and a half.
Right.
So I'm going to build.
Now it's important to that person.
Then the residents of Lakewood Meadows will come up.
Yeah, now it's important.
It's, it's like the two gentlemen that own property on the north side of. Nobody was paying attention on the, on the form base. Nobody had this vision of what. I think, what was your term? Right by law, fifteen hundred units? Did anyone have any concept of what that build out would look like? On any of these open space parcels when, when you did the seeker on the change of the zone? I don't think so.
Well, I would say we were there then. The concept is that's what we wanted development in uptown. That's where the whole plan was to develop uptown with this.
I know it was an assessment of where in the town.
You know, our comprehensive plans, the two primary objectives of the comprehensive is to protect agriculture, rural care.
By allowing encouraging development in those areas where it's most appropriate.
Right. Understood, but it's the highest density development in the town or the city of Canada. It's kind of. When I asked them if they had any other examples of a similar development, this dense. And the only thing they came close to was the, the subdivision up there in Farmington. Along Baton Hill Road. Southside of Baton Hill, at all these corners. I don't know.
Yeah, it's the kind of report you wanted, three thirty-two, on the south side, just across Melundy.
Oh, yeah, something more dense than that. Something way, I think.
I like what they've done. You know, they're, they're doing a professional job. I just think that the residents of this town would be shocked at what they see.
Okay, well, getting back to this issue. How does the board feel that maybe shouldn't be a carte blanche? Allowance of manufactured homes in any zoning district. But at the very least, uh, only by special exception or special use. I, I, I wouldn't. He, he swayed me. No, I would agree that it's more than we can give the public a chance to say something. Let them have some part of the process. My only concern is the criteria for issuing a special use permit. If people come out and say, we don't want a modular home next to us, that's, that brings a wrong kind of people, hear all that kind of stuff. Is that, I don't want that to be the criteria for us approving or denying it.
All you have to do is look at the assessment. And, and that type of housing doesn't get assessed for the same value. As, as a, a house with foundation. So, we.
So it does, it does, Tim, it does have a solid foundation. It has to have a solid foundation.
I, I heard that.
Okay, so I.
But it's, it's. I think that we have an obligation to protect property values of the existing houses, the existing residences of this town. And, you know, we buy a house because of the neighborhood that it's in, location, location, location. And you gave the example. A track house earns them. It's a Ryan home. Every third house is a repeat. And then all of a sudden, you have something that's out of character with that community being proposed. Or by right, could be.
Yep, oh. Wondering what kind of rights we have as a board to. Say that's out of character. You know what I'm saying? We, we don't want to get into.
Well, we don't know if it's out of character. What your suggestion is. Is that the planning board recommends that the town board consider. Uh, allowing. Uh, this type of housing by special permit in order to allow public comment. Uh, related to uh, character and other issues covered by the special permit.
Tim, I don't think seeker play any role in this. Assuming it's just one home and still would be classified as a type two action.
But aesthetic.
No.
Is part of the character.
What's that?
Aesthetic is part of character to the community.
Sure. Yeah, I'm just saying that it would be classified as a type two action.
Which means it wouldn't be a full seeker review. But your point is that a special use permit would, would cover that kind of review.
I mean, the planning board itself has similar things to look at. I'm just trying to clarify that seeker wouldn't play a role. It would just be the planning board's. Findings that you're, you're required to make as it relates to special use permits or.
A single-family house doesn't get a full seeker review.
Doesn't get any secret. It's not subject to regulations. That's what the type two action.
What about, what about a, but a special use permit would?
Uh, we still classify it as a single-family home, basically. So state regulations.
So would the change in zone be subject to the seeker?
Change in zoning. No, it would probably be classified as an unlisted action unless it affects more than twenty-five acres and it's a type one. Or a historic property or something like that.
I, I don't think. So I think you're saying the same thing, Tim. I think the special use permit would cover, would entail, or would require a review. That you're looking for.
How is the community protected?
With the special use permit.
Without, if there's no seeker review, how is the community protected? From, from development of the property that's out of care with the community?
I think the planning board still considers that, of course, if they're no more abuse. The seeker is of course established by the state and they just provide different standards for what they say are, we think that this. Is going to have a substantial impact that should be evaluated further. There's a type one actions or we feel that this action. Uh, has no meaningful impact that is required further. That's your type two action and everything falls in between is a listed action. So that's just what the state sets out. Secondly, the town could establish its own type two actions or type one actions. But, you know, that's the state rules. The town has its own local rules. Special use permit findings and stuff. And I think they would probably get it if they're, if they knew that. Alright, so wrap this thing up. Uh, would it be the consensus of the board that they could accept? Provision similar to what Chris mentioned that uh. Anything outside the manufactured home zoning district would require a special use permit. In order to be placed in any other residential zoning district? It's not much sure where that would fall in the code. There's probably a paragraph somewhere in there, sort of a general special use permit or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, yeah, it would be just like if you're doing short-term rentals for, well, you could do either. Where you're reviewing short-term rentals under two twenty dash thirty-five, which is the general special use permit. Provision. And then other specific special use permits like a cellular tower, a gas station have. Uh, paragraphs between two thirty-six and two sixty-two, two twenty dash sixty-two. Um, you could add two twenty dash sixty-two point three as mobile manufactured homes. But that's, the ordinance committee can figure that stuff out. I think from a broad perspective, the planning board is making its uh. Its comment.
Kareem, you, you have that provision? Or maybe Chris can help you. Get it in the minutes. Again, is that the consensus of the board?
That.
Did it be done by a special use?
Be done by a special use.
Yep. In any district other than the uh.
Still awake.
We, we're just sleeping.
So we don't recommend abolishing the, the zone. For.
Change.
We don't, we don't recommend change, but we would say that they. It could apply in other residential.
Is that something you understand of?
Yes, I get it. And I agree with Tim. And the rest of you.
Oh, okay. So it's not going to be a hard sell then? Alright, uh, as long as we get in the minutes, Dave's here to. Think get the drift of what we're talking about. And you have a hearing coming up, uh, February, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, February twenty-four, twenty-four.
Kristen has a comment.
Kristen is a comment.
Well, let's listen.
Um, I was just looking here at the two thousand fifteen New York laws. And it says manufactured homes in a single-family dwelling in residential district, manufactured home is affixed to a permanent foundation. Conforms with the identical development specifications and standards. Including general aesthetic and architectural standards applicable to conventional, conventional site-built, single-family dwellings. In the residential district in which the manufactured home is decided shall be deemed to be a conforming, single-family dwelling. For purposes of the applicable local zoning law and ordinance, so.
That is New York State law? Section?
It's uh, twenty-one B. I can send it to you.
It's also, I just sent you an email too with that guidance for the New York State Department of State. It relies heavily on that.
And also, but we still, as a town, can have a zone for manufactured housing.
We have a manufactured zoning district, so we're not exclusionary in that. We're not excluding it.
Correct.
There is an area of our town.
So.
Is there a conflict in our law?
Uh, there's conflict in every upstate New York town's law. That's definitely what the law says. Does that prohibit it being, being done by special use permit? Not necessarily. It would have to be hashed out with the ordinance committee and could you do a special use permit? Possibly. Um, I don't think it should restrict uh, your. Uh, your comment to the town board. Um, your purview isn't, is this con-conformity with New York State regulations and, uh, New York State executive law? Purview is more of a planning capacity, and I think that it is a relevant. Uh, comment for the town board to hear. Now, the town board will hear it and probably ask me and. Um, I'll, if they want to pursue a special use permit, I'll see if we can work out a way. Uh, to have a special use permit for manufactured housing. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure that I can do that, but I'd be, but I would look into it and see if we could. Uh, but, but the fact that it's an executive law isn't necessarily something you should consider in the.
Well, I, I did hear you say it conforms to the aesthetic. Of other single-family residences and here again, a pitched roof versus a flat roof.
Are the single, are the manufactured homes, are they flat roofs now or are they? I mean, I don't.
I think the ones on wheels are still flat roofs. So perhaps we need to see how New York State defines.
Right.
Two, because there is a difference between the modular home and that. There's a difference in the assessment. And, you know, assessment categories and things like that, so, yeah.
Well, and again, that's something that town board and the ordinance committee and me, when I'm wearing my town attorney hat. Will, will hash out and, and figure out if there's a way to. Use a special use permit to regulate that.
And I'm not sure how many occurrences we have. Somebody wants to put a manufactured one. I know we have modular.
I don't think you'll ever have one of the scenario I propose that. Because. Just doesn't seem like something somebody would do. But I mean, it's possible.
All right. I think an insurance company will. I think we have a consensus. Can set one with the town board and, uh, they can consider the recommendation deliberation. I think by, we're not excluding, and I think, right, again, I don't want to play lawyer, so. By allowing it by special use, we are allowing it, but we're.
That's why.
By its conditions.
That's why I'm, I'm hesitant to say right now, oh no, you can't do that because of New York State executive law. It's something that the ordinance committee and myself as town attorney would have to think about. No. By the way.
Maybe that's why the, uh, the draft. Was produced in the first place that can comply with the executive.
That's exactly why.
Oh.
Sarah and Mike Murphy, uh, realized that that, that was in there and said, oh, we got, we better change this. Um, so it got kicking through the, uh, ordinance committee to, to essentially be in conformity with, uh, with the law. I don't remember. It was sort of simultaneously with minimum building size, so it's sort of. Uh, matched up with that. Um, but it's, it's a effort to bring things into conformity. That being said. You know, your comment still stands and is relevant to the board, whether it's legal or not.
Legal is interpretation.
Okay. So that's, uh, that's our position. Again, we've got the minister approved from, uh. January fourteenth meeting that, uh. Kareem produced, uh, we have any additions or corrections to the published minutes? Got my last draft? If not, give me a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of last meeting.
Second? Oh, in favor, say aye. Thank you, Kareem. Nice job, as always. We have issued charity release from Mr. Nelson. Yeah, we can do, who's our backup?
I have a backup.
You're the backup?
I'm backup.
Okay, you can look at it. It's eleven grand.
I didn't see it.
Nelsonville, Middle Cheshire.
Well, if you're just looking at that, I'm going to recommend.
Yes.
That the town board direct town staff that there should be a consent agenda for all these.
Consent agenda.
So it's the town board, your town manager, you put together just so you can say, I moved the letters of credit. And then everyone's like, great. It's what the town board just started doing, and I think everyone agrees it's a thousand times better.
So, other than Mark does like to spend some time looking.
Okay, then, that's fair.
I think most of us just feel. If everybody else.
Viewing my notes.
Nope, that's valid. We're drawn.
Mr. Mark's credit, he goes out and looks at. These properties.
Once you've done that, then, oh, you would still have to list it out, then you would still go look at them.
One, one.
I will motion to release eleven thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars to CPN twenty-two zero nine three. Uh, Middle Cheshire, thirty-six ten.
Okay. And motion second to, uh, give Mr. Nelson his surety back. Regarding his property in Middle Cheshire, on favor, aye. Okay, uh, other business, uh, we did receive a resignation from Scott Neal. Uh, he has some issues with his mother as far as her health. Which he feels he has to attend to personally, and he also. Got a promotion at work, and so his work. Uh, duties are more intense, so he felt he has to, uh, has to resign, so. Lindsay is certainly aware of this. Uh, Tim is, is willing to step up and fill Scott's position. Which we will recommend to the town board, and they have to make that approval, and then we'll be shopping for another order.
Shopping.
So if anybody has any, uh, suggestions, I haven't checked with Lindsay if there's anybody in the queue, but, uh, if there is, we'll. Okay, because I think there's an opening for the zoning CBA, right? So now there's CBA, it's, it's. Uh, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Uh, next meeting, we are scheduled to discuss the cell tower. Allen County Route eight. I don't think we have, wait, we did receive some.
I thought I reviewed something that was recent, I checked out. I haven't seen anything, but I haven't checked like this week.
You thought there were plans, but I, I think what we'd asked for was a response to the neighbors.
Yeah.
Attorney's letter.
And you're required to have seven days prior to, uh, the meet, no.
Yes.
Absolutely, we, we.
Seven days, but then the other guy gets seven days. Oh, wait a minute, we were talking about our rules and procedure. We want to see. Anything that's to be considered at that meeting on the eleventh that we.
Yeah, so I, we told. Verizon to get their stuff in, in advance of seven days so that, uh, the neighbors could respond.
Well, then I think at some point, I don't know if the neighbors then respond to the, the other response. And then you were gonna somehow, at some point, lay in front of us what. The legal position is regarding the, uh, federal communications act.
Yes.
How it applies.
Uh, which will in large part turn on, uh, you know, the neighbors and the applicant side. Uh, in terms of the shot clock.
I knew, I knew Tim would ask it, you.
I'm glad you guys are all thinking about it. Eric texted me during your last meeting that didn't attend, that talked to Sarah. She agreed it wasn't necessary.
We still reappointed you in spite of. It was close, it was a close. It was three, two.
Uh, well, I don't want to know which three. Shot clock. Uh, it expires on the twentieth of February with rough numbers. At your next meeting, I've arranged with Nixon Keybody's attorneys that they will on the record. Uh, waive the shot clock for a period of time, so we won't have to be, uh, worried about it. I'd already reached out to them and said, hey, the day of, um, your planning board meeting, I said, you better. Put in writing that you're waiving this, and they said, well, actually, can we just do it on the record? Because there, there's time, there's any other time. If you're not outside of the shot clock. Keep an eye out for stuff that's submitted. Though, you know, there is, there are federal regulations, uh, regarding the special case law as well. Um, I can, I will give you a, I guess, a specific direction once we know both sides' positions. But it's a special use permit. There's nothing that says you have to grant it. There's no federal law that says, don't worry what the planning board says, they're gonna have to do whatever the applicant wants. That's not what the law says, so come at it like any special use permit, does it meet these requirements? Um, you know, and, uh, go through the section in two-twenty dash.
The argument that was made was they have to show cause to be able to cite.
Oh, now that's an interesting one. And that's part of, I want to see what the two attorneys were expert in this area of law say about that. From it. From what I know, without having read, read their summaries or their expertise, um. But they do have to show necessity. Now. You had, uh, engineers for Verizon and, uh, lawyers for Verizon said we have necessity. It's on page such and such of the, of our application. Uh, and then the gentleman from Long Island, the attorney said. Uh, it's not necessary because everybody, uh, gets good cell service right there. My understanding of the way cell service works though is it, now the tower goes like this. This tower isn't providing cell service to these neighbors, because they also, what the engineer said is. There's an area of need on Route three thirty-two and the three thirty-two corridor, I think he said. So I think it's shooting down towards there. That not your question, Tom?
Well, uh, the, the argument was that by their own data that they publish. Any FCC is it publishes for four G coverage, they're not showing any gaps.
Oh, or five G, or five G, there are no gaps.
Yes.
Wait, hang on, because what I heard.
So he was arguing that Verizon's own data that's published.
Yeah.
Doesn't show the.
What I heard, and I could be mistaken, and this is quite frankly why I want to wait on this particular piece of advice, because I don't know the answer, but they'll tell me. I heard Verizon say we have need, and the guy from Long Island say, you have, your need is four G, not five G. Or no, your need is five G, you're, you're good on four G. And I didn't know what the law says, if it says, if you have any need or just basic need.
Mark was the one who mentioned that he was losing his, his Apple.
Oh, yeah.
Thing at the, the light.
Yeah, so I don't know the answer to that, um. But if they already have, if they have no need for five G, then I don't know what their position is.
But if the law says that they have to show need and they don't show the need. Do we even entertain the application?
Yeah, they're still entitled to apply for a special use permit.
Yeah. I think their need is, their need to be competitive. Yeah, I think, and is that grounds for?
Hey, they said they can put it anywhere on that property, you know, permission, anywhere on that property.
Yeah, so, well, the, the other side of the. Okay, well, we'll worry about that next, next meeting, maybe. So they got a week to get their, uh. Supplement material in, so they don't get it within a week.
Well, you don't know if there's like a little speck of paint.
Says the lawyer.
Okay.
I've lost control, I've lost control here.
They just showed me a red screen. It's a pretty good. Yeah, sorry. Can you hear me now?
All right, Matt, Amanda, we're ready.
Okay, um, I'll take a motion, turn at eight forty-five. Everyone's second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.